Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Evelyn Turner Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District Four. Mike Baker, District Five. Gary Allen, District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post Ten at Large Counselor. Tony Washington, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 23rd meeting of the Columbus City Council. We very much appreciate your patience. We know you've been delayed because of our budget meeting, but I also know that you understand how important that is. So we're going to try to jump back on schedule. Go ahead and get things kicked off. We have Pastor Dennis Lacy is here to provide us our invocation. He's with North Highland Assembly of God Church, and we're going to have you come on up, Pastor, if you would, and provide us with the invocation consistent with your faith tradition.
Thank you. Let's pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be your name. As we begin this city council meeting, we want to echo the words of the Psalmist when he said, "This is a day the Lord has made where we rejoice and be glad in it." We have much to rejoice about this evening. Thank you for this incredible city where you allow us to live and work and worship and raise our children. What an incredibly blessed city we have. Thank you for the Honorable Mayor Teresa Tomlinson and these council members. I never cease to be amazed at how you give them incredible wisdom. And as I peruse the agenda tonight, I would pause and ask you, in accordance with your word in James, that if, when we need wisdom, we can ask, and you give us wisdom liberally. And as we deliberate these important issues and discuss them and find good solutions, we ask for your help, particularly as we look at budget items, because usually seems to go that we have more vision than we have resources for. So do another miracle like you did with that little lad's lunch where you spread the fish and loaves and fed a multitude, just to help us have ways we can stretch this budget and do what is necessary. And we pray for our nation. We know blessed is a nation whose God is the Lord. Righteousness exalts a nation. So we pray it again. We sung it for years. We prayed it for years, but we pray it again this evening. God bless America, and we love our country. And we just ask, as we conclude this prayer, that as your followers, you would make us agents, special agents of your mercy, that we would go out looking for people in crisis and that we would listen to them and look for people with unmet needs and help them. Look for people who need friends and show hospitality to them. Look for people who need a second chance and help them believe in themselves again. Look for people who sometimes are even a little obnoxious and rude to us and be kind to them and try to understand where they're coming from. And we want to look for people who are grieving and need comfort tonight. There are a lot of people who've experienced loss, and we would be remiss tonight if we did not lift up our friends in the UK who experienced that horrific tragedy and that ruthless attack. I pray for all of their families, that you, Holy Spirit, would comfort them as only you can, and we thank you for it. We give you praise. We ask in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Lacy, thank you so very much for that, and thank you for what you do and the North Highland Assembly of God Church does for this community. I want to welcome tonight also the venturing crew, 98 of the Chattahoochee Council Boy Scouts of Columbus. They are out of the Edgewood Presbyterian Church, and they're going to provide our pledge of allegiance. So we're going to ask them to come on forward. Tia Sh is going to provide you with a microphone, and as they prepare to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if you all would please stand.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Scout salute. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Do not stand one issue under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you all very much. We'd like for you to introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Stephanie Dickerson.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it's on. Let's see, maybe batteries are dead. There we go. Yeah, maybe close.
My name is Stephanie Dickerson.
Okay.
I'm Bea, and I'm from CL, Alabama.
I'm Chris Dickerson. I'm from Columbus, Georgia, and I'm the Cruz Quartermaster.
My name is Janay Stanley. I'm the Cruz Advisor of Administration.
My name is Jos Garza. I'm the Cruz Advisor.
Great. What is the Cruz, Venturing Crew? Is that a particular designation, or do you have a particular mission within the Boy Scouts?
We do. Actually, our focus is more towards leadership and preparing our youth as, from the ages from 14 to 21, for the next step, going into college, the military, professional life, anything to give them that upper edge in society.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all very much. We're so proud of you. We're glad to have you here with us today, and let's give them another round of applause.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go on into the mayor's agenda, and we're going to have John Redman come forward with, and Elizabeth Barfield, our internal auditor and forensic auditor, to provide the report, the final report on the auditors, excuse me, the Recorder's Court audit update. John.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with you. I would like to say that we're going to do something a little bit different tonight than the way we normally do it, and we're going to do it for your benefit, because you've been sitting a long time today, and we respect that, and we know it's been a long day. What we'd like to do today is I'm going to present today, and then Elizabeth will come back at a later date, provided you'd like to have us do that, and we will give you the complete audit over two sessions, because this audit report could last over an hour, and I don't think y'all want to hear that tonight. What I want to do is share with you the items that I think are germane to your budget deliberations, particularly as they apply to the Recorder's Court and the changes it's undergone over the last several months and continues to see in the way of changes. So let's get started now. Go ahead and do it. Like I say, I've made it very short. I think I can do it in about 10 or 15 minutes. The audit of the Recorder's Court was requested by Council Henderson and authorized by the City Council on September 13th of last year. The Recorder's Court hears traffic, criminal, and city ordinance cases made by the Columbus Police Department, Special Enforcements, Metro Narcotics Task Force, the Fire Department, Georgia State Patrol, and the Columbus State University Police Department. They also hear any disputed cases that come out of the metro parking police function. The court's functional responsibility is to set bail, issue warrants, collect fines and bonds, hear and determine if probable cause exists for state and Superior Court offenses, and they also adjudicate city ordinances and certain state ordinances. That's what they do. The audit scope include every aspect of Recorder's Court. Today's presentation will be limited to the following areas. We're going to talk about governance, management and supervision, revenue and its enhancement opportunities, and budgetary concerns. We reviewed the budgetary performance, the performance metrics, the department goals and objectives, and the internal controls and operations. We also conducted a payroll audit and employee interviews. The city charter places the governance of Recorder's Court to the City Council. Of course, you all have been overseeing that here for the last several years. Ongoing review, guidance, and management of the budgets and other performance metrics by an appointed steering committee of council and members is necessary for success, and that's one of the things that we recommend, is that from your group, that you appoint three or four of you that have an interest in Recorder's Court to serve as a steering committee and would meet with them probably on a monthly or quarterly basis to review their metrics, their budgetary performance, and the other issues that affect the court. We think that would be beneficial to both you and to the court. The clerk of court is responsible for the tracking and reporting of the metrics to the City Council. Of course, the chief judge is also a critical part of that mission. In management and supervision, we feel this should consist of a full-time senior judge supported by three part-time pro tem judges, all of which are appointed by City Council. The pro tem judges serve under the supervision and direction of the senior judge. The daily operations of the court are really managed by the clerk of the court, and as you know, you appointed an interim clerk here several months ago, Mr. Larry Love, and he has been fulfilling that role for you during that time. And of course, that position is also appointed by City Council. The clerk is assisted by two supervisors, one that directs the financial operations and the other is over the judicial or docket operations. Revenues, current and forecasted. We looked at the financial statements for about the past 10 and two-thirds years that we had off the Advantage System that we felt were very reliable and we trusted. They were part of our CAFRs each year. And what we found is that the budget was over, the department was over budget on revenues by $2.5 million over that 10 and a half-year period. For the remainder of this year, however, revenues are protected to be under budget by about $400,000 for a total revenue of 3.1 million. Revenue peaked several years ago at about 4.4 million, and it has dropped a little bit from time to time, but this year it's down a bit more. And I'm going to try to address a few of those things, and I'm going to cover up one item, because we don't want that. Items affecting the downward trend in revenue for this year, the number of cases is down slightly. Now, whether that's intentional or not, we don't know. We know we're down several officers in terms of the police department, and they are the major source of the cases. The case disposition has changed a bit as we've had some changes in the judges over there, and we've had a significant reduction in probation cases, and I'm going to talk more about that in a bit. We've had an increase in public defenders, and they do a great job of defending the indigent persons that have come before the court, and as such, that tends to lower the revenue a bit. And of course, as I said earlier, we've had a change in judges. When we first looked at this, just even as recent as yesterday, it looked like, based on the current run rate, that revenue for next year would be down around $2.5, $2.6 million, and that's quite a bit below where we had anticipated. Today, after this was put together, I received an updated information on the number of probation cases. And here you can kind of see what the probation trend line has looked like over the last several years. We've gone from several thousand cases, over 3,000, down to, you know, some 1,800 this past year. And for the last four months, we've averaged 42 cases per month. The good news is that for the first three weeks of May, following some additional training by the Probation Service Chief Executive Officer, that has jumped back up to 143 cases in three weeks, so we're back on track for about 160 or so per month, 165. And that will translate into bringing that projected revenue back up to around the 3 million mark for next year, and I believe that's about where you've got pegged in the budget that was proposed. Revenue enhancement opportunities, I think we always should look at those. Efforts should be made to encourage payments of bonds prior to the date of court appearance. Now, we certainly recognize that everyone is entitled to their day in court, and we would not want to take that opportunity or privilege away from anyone. But many people really have no intention of contesting their case. They go sit in the courtroom for one to several hours, awaiting their name to be called, and then they stand up and plead guilty, and they're fined, and they go pay their fine. For those people, we want to give them the opportunity to basically skip court and go ahead and pay it. Part of the way we can do that is we have updated the website. You'll see more of that next time, with a fine calculator built into it, so a person can go to our website now, and they will get the, they can actually click on that, and it will tell them exactly what their fine is, and this time they can go ahead and mail in payments. We have investigated, not set in place by any means, the opportunity for online payments, and particularly with the younger generation. City Manager Hughley has told us about the millennials. He's given us some education on that, and many of those people really, they're not into writing checks. They like to pay with their, they have a checking account, but they like to pay with their phone or with other electronic devices online. So we want to have that more fully explored. We have done some investigative work on it, but of course, that's up to the ultimate purview of the Finance Director and the City Manager to approve any changes like that. So we have not done that, but we have found some alternatives that we believe could work for them very well. That would also increase the revenue and bring it in faster. We've also recommended that they utilize the drive-through payment window. Y'all may recall that the payment window was closed for over five years. It malfunctioned some years back, and they decided just to stop using it. That is not a good thing, because we have a very limited number of parking spaces at Recorder's Court. Currently, there's 47 spaces in the lot, and 15 of those are basically reserved for employees. And in fact, the employees, there's a couple that use the handicap spaces, and there's only two handicap spaces in that parking lot. So we're going to recommend, as part of our overall report, and you have the full report before you in hard copy, we're going to recommend that that be increased by two additional spaces, so there's the two that normally would be available for the public, because we've recently had some people that encountered some serious difficulties getting into the court, and one of them was an attorney that just last week took a fall out there as he was trying to get in. So he's cautioned us about how far he had to walk. So we'd like to see that changed a little bit, and we think that would help as well. We want to have better utilization of the probation system, and as I just said a few moments ago, we're getting that probation back on track. Basically, when you have, when you receive an offense and get a citation, whether you go to court or you pay it ahead of time, you either pay the fine or you have to go on the probation if you're paying. Now, if you're an indigent person, the probation has no fees associated with it. It also generally results in a community service sentence as opposed to paying money. So don't let that upset you about the indigent people, because they're well taken care of, and with all the public defenders that you all have funded and placed over there, they're doing an excellent job of representing those people and making sure that they qualify for their services financially, and if they do, they represent them probably as well as any attorney in town would do. So they're well protected. The other thing that the probation services has done is they've said that if people that don't have the money on the day they go to court will come back and pay it within a one-month period, that they will waive any probation fees, and even though they may be assigned to probation because they're unable to pay that day, that probation will end as soon as they make that payment. And if they go beyond that period of time, then they have to pay the probation fee, which is $50 per month until they complete the payment of their fines. But that is the way to collect the money. If you just continue the case and tell them to come back, we've tried that, and that's not working very well. We had some 15 cases in a survey that we looked at. Only seven of them came back, and of those, four paid the fine, three did not. They still didn't have the money, and the rest of them never came back or paid the fine. So you need to utilize the probation services. That's what will bring the revenue back up. We know it's going to be down, because with more public defenders and we've changed some judges around, it's imperative that we do collect the fines that are levied and that are available to be collected. So we've also recommended some enhanced cash management procedures, and with that, what we really want to do is we want to make sure that the monies are taken in, they're deposited on a daily basis, that they get to the bank and into the account so that they can be utilized, because that money goes into the general fund, and you all know how important the general fund is, and you have a lot of demands on it. So we certainly want those things to be taken care of. The financial statements in terms of budget, we looked for that, again, for that 10 and two-thirds year period that we had available, and we found that during that time, the budget was, the department was under budget on expenses by $117,926. Now, you might say, well then, why didn't they spend some of that money and get the place cleaned up sooner or get the carpets cleaned, some of the things they've come back to counsel, and Mr. Loves had to ask for funding. $186,384 of that was in the area of salaries and benefits, and they can't really take those salary savings and apply it to operations in a department such as this. They were actually $68,458 over budget on operational, so there were some expenses that they just couldn't, items they just couldn't fit into the expense budget. The items that we did not locate in the fiscal year 2018 budget that we feel need to be addressed is there needs to be carpet and seat cleaning expenses budgeted on a periodic basis, probably twice a year. Those things have not been cleaned in a number of years, and they were pretty raunchy, and I think the counselors that came over and looked at them, Counsel Garrett and who else came, Counsel Pew, Mayor Pro Tem, they came over and they saw some things that really kind of upsetting to them, and we want to make sure that the place is neat and clean and it's in the best repair it can be. Another thing we found was that there was probably a need for ongoing repairs and maintenance. We found a lot of neglected items, door handles and knobs and lock sets that were broken, those kind of things, and they had to get special appropriation or assistance on financing to repair those, if there needs to be that. I know last week, y'all had some discussion about where the budget money was for the conflict attorneys, and I'm not here to argue that point. I will say this, I think you're going to have to have more than $16,000 this next year for conflict attorneys at Recorder's Court. The city collects about $4.7 million a year in fines and forfeitures among all of the courts that collect that. Over, about 4.1 million of that has been coming from the Recorder's Court, and the other 300, 400, $500,000 is spread over a number of other courts, primarily the state court, the municipal court, a little bit from the Superior Court, and a little bit from the juvenile courts. So you need to keep in mind that those things are important. We've got to keep working on that, but they're finding what they have is, even though we have multiple public defenders, when the public defender is over there and they come in with a group of people that are charged and it's the same crime, that one public defender is conflicted and can only represent one of those persons, because what happens is if they try to represent two or three of them, as soon as one turns on it and says, "My buddy did that. I didn't really break in and steal those, that box of cigars down at the 7-Eleven," then that attorney is conflicted, and then you're going to have to drop the case or dismiss it. So you have to have those, and we try to identify those ahead of time so that they can arrange for the attorneys that they have on the docket, on their listing to call in. So I think that may be an issue that has to be addressed before the end of the year. There's also a need for more management focus, particularly on contractual services. Mr. Love has been working in that area diligently, and I think he has found maybe an opportunity to reduce the budget a little bit in that area, if you all will approve some changes that he'd like to make. That really concludes my presentation for today. I wanted you to know where it stood financially. Again, I think we're going to get the revenue coming in at about 3, 3.1 million for next year, which is, I think, pretty consistent with the budget. I think the expenses will be on track as we go forward. Many of the things have been taken care of up to now, and hopefully they'll be able to cover those, and Mr. Love can identify a couple of opportunities in contractual services to reduce some expenses. I would certainly support that. I think you've got your job before you, if you will, to create a steering committee from your group, and also you have a responsibility, it's coming up, to appoint, you know, a permanent, hopefully a full-time judge that you'll decide, and also a full-time clerk on a permanent basis.
Thank you, John. We have Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Redman. And I don't know if this is going to come up in your order or not, but when I went down there on tour of the Recorder's Court and the interaction between, say, a female coming in to pay on fines or pay something in the back in that hallway.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's really disturbing, because inmates have too, they have, let me see if I can see it.
Holding days.
Yeah. They have too much access to the public.
Right. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and tell you what's in the report, because I know you haven't had an opportunity to read it. Mr. Love examined the two courtrooms down there, and you know, he came to you about a month or so ago, and he had a pretty ambitious program of cutting a door through there and setting up some payment windows down that hall that was costing more than probably what we thought was a good idea for long-term, particularly if this function ends up being in a criminal justice center, if we ever get one built. Hopefully, we will in the next couple of years. I know that's one of the discussion items. But what he has been able to do and reduce that cost tremendously is to switch the courtrooms. There's only two seats difference in the seating between one courtroom and the other. If you move the Recorder's Court over to the other courtroom, then they can come right out the door and go to a payment window there in the hallway on the way out. It would necessitate basically putting two doors in there, one to keep them from going the wrong way back toward the jail. Secondly, it would have an electronic lock on the other one, so that when the people come out, they'd go by the payment window or by the docket window if they have a license suspended or something like that that they need to deal with. Then they would be released, and they'd go right out the front door. They would not ever pass through that area that concerned you, Mayor Pro Tem. That courtroom over there on the other side, that we'd be flipping over, the Environmental Court. Environmental Court is a small court. It has four sessions per month, you know, two Wednesdays out of the month. They have a morning and an afternoon session. There's not nearly as many cases held there as there are in Recorder's Court, and it will enable that, those people to go through there, and then they can come out and come to the standard payment window outside if they're fined and need to make a payment. The other thing that's held over there is the preliminary hearings, basically for the more serious offenses that have to be handled and where the Superior Court or the state court is, need to be, come over and do those initial hearings. And those can easily be done in there, because most of those people are going to be coming out of the jail and probably would be back there in the holding area awaiting their time in court. So we believe that is a very viable solution. It'll probably only cost a few thousand dollars to fix the windows and the doors that are needed for that, and that would be a reasonable expenditure in order to preserve the safety and really frankly, a lot of what we've recommended is risk avoidance. We want to mitigate risk wherever we can, and our recommendations in that report, if you read through it, you'll see that it does just that, because we don't want your daughter going back there or your 16-year-old son passing through that area, because they're inside the jail line, and you know, there's a lot of bad things that can happen if one deputy gets called away from their duty station, and sometimes that might happen. So we want to make sure that those things are covered. Any other questions?
Yes, Counsel Garrett.
Okay.
I think we may have talked about this when I met with, met with the Recorder's Court with the tax intercept program.
Right.
I remember when Judge Zelensky brought that up before I got elected, but it was during the budget review meetings. We had something like 1.1 million in fines that had not been collected. Are we going to be able to do that in the future with the socials, and then for the ones we don't have a social, so we can't submit them to the tax intercept program? Is there any possibility of selling that portfolio of collections to a collections agency, even if it's not for a lot of money, if we're sitting on a live account?
It could be, but we actually think that that can be worked.
Okay.
A couple of things have happened or happening right along now. One of the things that we had to do is in response to some of the litigation against the court and its officers and you all, was that we had to give a statement at the end of their time of all their offenses, what they were charged with and that sort of thing, that basically listed their charges, the warrants form. So what has to be done, and they've been having to do a lot of that manually while the IT department developed a program to generate it. As of last week, they got the program finished. It's been tested and has started working. They've had a few little glitches, but that's pretty well cleared out. So that will help us in a couple of areas. One, those people were really doing double work, having to write all those things out over in the docket area. That's just a lot of work and really impaired their ability to work on some other things. So now that that's coming online and that will be automated, that will free up some personnel over there that they can, they can begin researching and pulling
personnel over there that they can, they can begin researching and pulling these social security numbers. There is, we do have access to some systems, I believe, through the police department because they can look people up and find social security numbers. So if we can work out a cooperative effort there, we should be able to get those and maybe harvest that. As I understand, there's about a half million dollars that's sitting out there in that category. That's a whole lot of money, folks. That could pay for a lot of the things y'all had to vote down today that you'd like to have done, I'm sure. I think something else that needs to be said, too, is the GCIC reporting was behind by over two years, two and a half years in arrears. Currently, we only had one GCIC TAC officer that was certified to put that data into that system. That's one of the things we readily identified, we got another person identified that could be trained to do it. She has been trained and has been, become certified, and they're both working on that backlog. Now, it's not completely gone yet, but they are working it down pretty quickly. And what they thought they needed, two temporary employees for six months to a year, they won't need it. These people should be able to finish it in the next two or three months, and that'll be caught up. Another thing that we found with the changeover in personnel, the judges and so forth, and the also the financial section supervisor that, that died last fall, is that there's an annual report that's required by the administrative office of the courts, and we found that it was delinquent, it was due in at the end of the year, and it had not been submitted. I'm pleased to report that it was submitted this past week, so we worked with them and helped them get that up, and several other people down there worked on that and got it in. So we're very pleased of the progress that's been made, there's been a tremendous amount of cleanup of the area, replacing some of the broken chairs and furniture, just getting junk and things cleaned out. It looks a lot different. Once we get the courtroom switched, I believe that's scheduled for June the 5th, which is a Monday, once that's done and we can get those other pavement stations installed and get the place patched up and painted, I think you'll really see a lot of difference. I think you'll see a place that you're very proud of. But there's just, there's been a lot of accumulated neglect, and frankly, it's because they didn't have the money to do it. It's not that people weren't aware of it. So we're glad that you all saw fit to appropriate some funds and go down there and take a look at it and, and do that for us. So any other questions? I'll be happy to answer if you have any.
Looks like that's it. John, thank you very much for all you do. Great job.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you all.
Okay. All right. Next, we have our minutes from April 25th and May 9th. Yes. Yes, sir.
If, if it's appropriate, I've got Recorder's Court discussion on my agenda, and I'd like to bring the HR director up and let her talk about where we need to go with the Recorder's Court judge and the Recorder's Court clerk.
Okay.
At this time.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. With regard to the Recorder's Court judge, that is the senior Recorder's Court judge there in Recorder's Court, currently there, you have an interim part-time senior judge, and you have an opportunity to continue that as is, or I know that you are entertaining the option of filling that position full-time. So on the city manager's agenda, as he has mentioned, there are two resolutions. One of the resolutions is for you to consider or have the opportunity to fill the senior Recorder's Court judge position with a full-time judge. Also, in that resolution is a recommended salary range for that position. The salary range came from a compensation study that was done, and that range was a minimum of $85,000 to a maximum of $153,000 for a full-time judge. The internal auditor has already alluded to the makeup of the Recorder's Court judge staff. There's currently the senior part-time Recorder's Court judge and three interim, excuse me, part-time pro tem judges. So the recommendation to council, should it decide to change the makeup of the judgeship there, would be a full-time senior Recorder's Court judge, based on the salary range that I've mentioned. So that's the resolution that's, that's before you. The second position there at Recorder's Court is the clerk or the chief clerk of Recorder's Court. Currently, as the interim, excuse me, the internal auditor mentioned, Mr. Larry Love is filling the interim clerk of Recorder's Court position. You could allow things to remain as is and take no action. There is a recommendation in the resolution that's provided, however, that the court coordinator that's there now, that that position be eliminated, and that you employ a full-time recorders, excuse me, a full-time clerk of Recorder's Court. There is no budget for the chief clerk in Recorder's Court. However, that position is established by ordinance, and that's referred to in your resolution there. So the proposal or recommendation in the resolution is to delete the court coordinator position and fill the, or the ordinance, as the ordinance directs, the ordinance for a chief Recorder's Court clerk. So those are the options. In deleting the court coordinator position, the salary would simply be transferred to the chief clerk of Recorder's Court. So those are the resolutions that are now on the city manager's agenda, and I'll answer any questions that I can.
All right. It doesn't look like there's any questions at this time. We do have the resolutions. We have Counselor Henderson.
Well, I think obviously, based on the HR director's recommendation and, and the auditors, the ideal situation would be to have a full-time senior Recorder's Court judge. I think the challenge is, I mean, we're just about to put this budget together, and that's not in the budget, is it, Mayor?
No. I don't, I don't think so. Yeah, no, we, we were waiting on the creation of the position. Yeah. Do you want that?
Where would those funds come from?
Well, it's, it's not in the budget, and that's why it was critical to bring this before you now, that if it stays the course, then it doesn't need to be budgeted, but if you want to change it, then we need to appropriate that in the budget, and it would have some impact on fund balance. And we can tell you, I'll have them to go ahead and calculate what the impact will be, but we just needed to know whether to stay the course or go this new direction.
And there was, and I think maybe to have Pam or Angelica, whoever's the appropriate individual, there has been some discussion about we could restructure some of the judges because I think there's three or four part-time judges over there in addition, so if you did a full-time and two part-times, you know, you might be able to come out, the math might work a little better.
I agree, and I think, because I know what was presented here, it looks like, and what was presented from the auditor, was a one full-time, a three part-time.
That's correct.
And if it's possible with our caseload to get away with two part-time, what would that look like? What would, what would the impact be? Because full-time judge, now we've got benefits that we've got to roll into the compensation package. I just, it would be helpful to see what the total impact would be.
Well, what, what I can do, Madam Mayor, is if we know the direction, by the time you get to my agenda, I'll have staff ready to, I'll have them ready to present that information.
Okay. And I think they're saying that they've assessed and, and I guess worked with John and perhaps Larry, and it looks like they're recommending the one and the three. So he just said, yeah.
So if you kind of give some direction, then we'll have them calculate. And by the time you get to this on my agenda, we'll be ready to share that information with you.
I can just give you one person's opinion, that is, I would like to see the full-time. I think the court would operate better, we've been making some changes in there, but that's contingent upon us being able to make it work financially. I don't like taking salaries out of fund balance. I just, I don't like, especially creating a new position, taking that out of fund balance because not only are we taking that this year, but we've got no foreseeable funding mechanism for next year or the year after, so.
Well, and if there, there's no further discussion right now, we can come back and present that to you, and then you can have discussion and decide based on where we tell you the money is going to come from and how it's going to impact fund balance.
And I will say, you know, along the lines of, of what the budget chair said during the budget meetings and now here, that we have seen a sharp decline in Recorder's Court proceeds, probably because of some of the, you know, prolonged absence of some of the judges due to health, surgery reasons and things of that nature, and just not having a set structure. And so we would like to think, obviously, and it's almost, John, where are you? Is it a half a million decrease? What's the decrease in, in Recorder's Court? $400,000 decrease in one year, and I'd have to think that if we could get an appropriate structure, that you would see that recouped, and that's general fund monies. So again, it's sort of betting on the come, but it has been a steady source of income for years and years, and then I think when we had the absences and, and temporary instability there, that you saw the immediate effect in the, in the revenues.
Well, I, there's nine other opinions around here. I would like to see the total fiscal impact of the full-time and the Recorder's Court chief clerk on there, too.
Well, we'll, we'll bring that back, Mayor, later on my agenda.
They, they have it recommended for three part-times, Counselor Woodson. Okay, let's see, we have the Mayor Protem.
John, didn't you also say that based on the information you got today, that things seem to be going back the other way?
Yes, ma'am. I said, it is encouraging that with the increase in the number of cases going back into the probation system, that, that's a key source of the revenue. Historically, and we looked over that 10, 11-year period, about one-fourth of the money flows through the prob, through the probation service side. And as such, that provides steady revenue that comes in because it's basically like somebody buys a car and they pay for it over X number of months, and every month, the finance company gets the $300 or $500 or whatever it is that they're paying. And the same thing, it works the same way with the probation. The problem is that when you start dropping your cases that are going into the probation system, the pipeline begins to empty out, just like water does in, in the faucet and going down the pipe. And once it gets empty, it takes a while to refill and replenish the pipeline and get it back up to where the money starts coming, but that's what we're now seeing is happening in the month of May, that that number has more than tripled, it'll probably be quadruple by the end of the month of what's going back into that pipeline. It had dropped from, you know, over 100 cases a month, 150 or so, down to as little as 42 on average for the last three months. And I mean, that basically says, we're really not putting them on probation, we're doing continuances, or we dismissing cases. There's a lot of other dispositions, and when you have that happening, your probation pipeline goes away. But when the probation pipeline is working, it supplies about one-fourth. In fact, you can go back and look at that graph that's in your package, and you're looking at where it was providing over a million dollars a year that came through the probation services back when the, the Recorder's Court was generating over $4 million a year in revenue.
Okay. And you also said, I think, Larry.
Yes, ma'am.
The recommendation was one full-time judge, three part-time judges, an administrative clerk position into one, not two separate.
Right, that's correct.
And what else, was there something else?
Well, I think that, that's it now. I think Counselor Henderson said, you know, maybe they could do with two part-time judges, someone did, on the council. And you probably could do that, but you probably still need to have a judge that's kind of an on-call because there are times when a judge takes a vacation, is out sick. Keep in mind, Recorder's Court runs six days a week, and even they have to come in a lot of times on holidays, particularly if it's a long holiday weekend. Somebody has to come in and do those first appearance hearings, because you've got a $48-hour time window from when they're arrested to the time they're supposed to have a hearing, and if you don't, and they've got a good attorney, they don't get released. And that has happened before. It's happened, not as frequently in Columbus, it happened recently in Phoenix City where they didn't get one in, and it was somebody that was really a bad guy, that he, he walked away scot-free after committing several crimes and being in a police chase that involved a wreck, and because they didn't get him before the judge in time, he walked off. So we don't want that sort of thing happening. We want to make, you know, we can't tell judges how much to fine people, and we certainly don't intend to get into that business. We're not there to supervise or evaluate judges. But judges do different things depending on, they have some flexibility and latitude in, in their fines. So, you know, you've got to make sure that when you have the opportunity for revenue, that you're producing it. So you don't want to be without a judge and not have enough backups. Two is probably adequate if they're, because they'll be working the part-time things of probably the Saturday courts and the environmental, and they could then fill in and make extra money when they, when they fill in for, you know, the, the full-time judge or one of the other ones, part-times when they're out. But you, you, you'd have to have a minimum of two part-time if you have one full-time. But you could possibly get by that way, or you could have the three, three part-times.
Okay.
So Mr. City Manager, bring your analysis back, bring back both analyses of the two and the three.
Okay. I've got some preliminary information for you now. Finance Director.
Come on.
Finance Director Angelica Alexander, she was faster than I thought she could be.
Based on the salary range that the, that was provided and the estimated annual impact, like I said, that was provided by the HR director, the fiscal 18-year dollar value would be an additional $87,300. That's at a starting salary of $118,846. The fund balance impact would be .21 days.
And where would that leave us?
So based on where we left off in the budget review session, we left off at 60.71 days. With this being .21 days, that would leave us at 60.50 days.
And that is with one senior full-time and three part-time or two part-time?
Three part-time.
Okay, three part-time, so we'd be a little, little bit better if they, if you went with two part-time.
All right, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, we just went through about three and a half hours of, of requests from various departments, including the courts and all, and I think we, we, we talked about the, have you call them surprises or the unknowns, and here we are, you know, back at it again. But what I would like, and I'm not ready to discuss it, prepared to discuss it at this point, but I am, I want to know more about that loss of revenue or the decrease, the decrease in revenue. I want to really try to understand that, and whether I call the administration or the, the internal auditor or whatever to have a better conversation on it, I, I just, that concerns me a little bit. You know, after we've made a lot of changes to, to, you know, pretty much upgrade the, the court there, it, it does kind of raise that flag with me.
Well, we're certainly, of course, we've got a work session next Tuesday on March 30th. It's a consent agenda work session, agenda. We can discuss whatever you'd like to discuss then, but, but to move the budget forward, we're either going to stay the course or we're going to go this new direction, and we'll need to know that to finalize and move the budget process forward.
And that is your, what you're proposing, is your request for a resolution stating that? That's what you're looking for tonight?
Well, the resolution that I have, yes, tonight, and of course, we can delay it. It was an add-on because we realize the urgency of the budget process and advertising the newspaper and so forth, so on, and so we needed some direction. And that's why we are bringing it tonight. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right, we have Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Alexander, what, what was the salary that you used to make that calculation?
It was 100...
It was $118,846.
And how did you arrive at that figure?
Well, that's based on the current salary of the senior judge and the estimated impact presented by the HR Director of $75,000.
Well, the resolution says that the salary range would be 85,386 to 153,697.
Well, and certainly, we're not attempting to set the salary, that's for you to do, and if it's lower than what has been mentioned, then of course, it's not as much of an impact, obviously, on the fund balance.
Or if it's higher?
Then it's more of an impact, yes. So, but that's, that's going to be, that salary's going to be set by you.
What would be, Mr. City Manager, what would be the effect if we did not, did not make a, did not deal with, did not make a decision on this tonight, but did it next Tuesday? What effect would that have?
I don't think that would be a problem, because I think they, they, the staff and finance will still be packaging the final piece of the budget. So I think we could do it next Tuesday, if you'd like.
I'm just thinking that, you know, this is some new information, and Mr. Redmond's report is new information, and it may be that if we could, you know, digest it for a couple of days, Mike could make a better decision, and our finance people might be able to come back to us with a, you know, more definite, I don't know if it's...
Well, I mean, I think that's reasonable, that's why I mentioned the work session, and so what we can do is delay those two resolutions on my agenda and continue this discussion at the work session next Tuesday.
Right, so I would advertise the budget as we ended the Budget Review Session, and then at first reading, you would make any additional changes to the budget.
Say that again, I didn't hear the first part.
We would have to advertise the budget as where we left it at the end of our Budget Review Session, at the 60.71 days, and then at the first reading, you can make additional changes to the budget.
And that has to be advertised by?
I have to advertise it by the 31st.
By the 31st?
Yes. Has to be published on 31st. So I'll advertise it as we left it, but then you can make changes to it on first reading, which is June 6th.
Because you have a deadline to get it to the media to advertise it, and we can't discuss Tuesday and expect it to be in the paper on?
On Tuesday.
On Wednesday?
Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Well, I don't want to throw too much of a monkey wrench into this, you know.
Oh, you can make changes on first read on June 6th. So if we delayed some of the discussion until the work agenda, you can make changes to the budget on June 6th.
But you'd be making it on first read?
On first read.
Okay. All right, we have Councilor Davis. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, Mayor Pritchett, I'm sorry, that you...
Yes, uh-huh. The figures you're looking at, did it include the administrative clerk position being combined into one?
The resolution, I believe, recommended that the court coordinator position be deleted, and then the subsequent chief clerk position be created. There's no budgetary impact, because the salary and benefits for this position would be the same as the current court coordinator.
Okay. But won't you have some savings by doing that? You'd be eliminating the clerk's position. There is no current... She went back to the Sheriff's Department.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, we have the Budget Chair.
But along those lines, is there any reason why we couldn't go ahead with number nine and start advertising for the chief clerk? Because frankly, whether we go with a full-time or a part-time, we're going to need that position filled, and the longer we wait, the farther into the fiscal year we're going to be, so...
Well, and that's a good point. If you don't have any issues or concerns with the elimination of the coordinator and going with a court clerk, and it's budget-neutral, we could proceed for, you could proceed forth with that, and then discuss the judge either today.
I'd move approval, number nine, on the City Manager's Agenda.
Okay, that's a motion for approval of item nine on the City Manager's Agenda related to the clerk and the administrative position.
Yes.
Is there a second? Second, any further discussion? Is it queued up? No, okay. All those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed? Okay.
And so, Madam Mayor and Council, we'll just bring back the discussion on the judge on the work session agenda next Tuesday.
Okay.
And we'll pull item eight on my agenda, the Recorder's Court Judge in three part-time, and wait for that discussion next Tuesday.
Okay. If anybody has any bright ideas between now and the time we get to your agenda, then maybe we could revisit them then. Councilor Thomas.
And if we could, Mr. City Manager, if the Finance Director could get to us before next Tuesday, the financial impact and, you know, where, what we're looking at, not only for the senior judge, but if there's any change in those part-timers or whatever, but if we could have that information before we come back next Tuesday, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we'll have options with three part-timers and then another option with two part-timers.
I'm not, I'm not so much worried about the number, I'm looking at the cost.
Sure, well, that's what I mean. We'll have the number and cost.
Okay.
For three and then two with a full-time judge.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Huff.
Yes, is it possible, since we have moved to the City Manager's Agenda, because the people from Westfield have been here a long, long time, that they could go ahead and...
Well, we've got, we've got folks actually with physical issues that are on the public agenda, so I'm trying to get to them.
Okay.
We've got a gentleman who's on oxygen in the back, and I'm trying to, yes, what's that? Is that, we have some zonings, too, so let's just try to move through as quickly as we can. I appreciate that, Councilor Huff, it's always so tough, we've got everybody delayed tonight. All right, good, well, we'll move on then to the minutes of the 25th, April 25th and May 9th, those have been provided to you. There's a motion and second that the minutes be received. Any minutes, excuse me, any comments or edits? Hearing none, all those in favor, please state aye. All right, and we'll turn it over to the City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three zoning items, we'll go through them quickly, these are all ready for action. First one is property at 705 35th Street, it's going to a planned mixed-use development, it's ready for action.
Got a motion and second for approval, is there any discussion related to this item? Seeing none, the item is queued for your electronic voting. And it does pass.
It passes. Next item is the 6001 Springs Road parcel for senior adult living, it's ready for action.
Got a motion and second for approval, is there any discussion related to this item? Seeing none, the item is queued for voting. And it passes.
All right. Last item, Mayor, is the Claflin Property Proposal Uptown Zoning, it's ready for action.
Got a motion and second for approval, is there any discussion related to this item? There being no discussion, the item is queued for voting. And it passes.
That passes. And we did have a request for a short executive session on real estate acquisition, Mayor, that's it.
Okay, thank you, and appreciate you, Mr. City Attorney, and so we'll head into the public agenda. First, we have Ms. Elizabeth Melton, who is representing the Valley Homesteaders and would like to speak to us about backyard chickens. Good evening. If you would, ma'am, just state your name and your address.
Elizabeth Melton, 5824 Neese Street, Columbus, Georgia 31909.
Maybe a little bit more, there you go.
Okay. And if I could get a little guidance on how to do the PowerPoint?
Let's see here, is Tia Sha around? Yeah, here we go, they're going to help you out. Thank you. All right, we'll start, start the timer.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Melton, and I'm the founder of the Valley Homesteaders Group. In January, our spokesperson, Brian Gatawski, appeared before this council with a simple request, lower the minimum threshold of the lot size required to have backyard poultry, while also lowering the number of birds allowed. After our January presentation, a proposal for new legislation was written. Our group was not involved in this process, and we found the proposed requirements to be needlessly complex, difficult, and expensive. We responded to the proposed legislation by requesting a few changes. One, the $45 initial fee is too steep. The $10 registration fee that is required for other animals does seem fair and reasonable. Two, inspection of one's property by special enforcement is intrusive and unnecessary. It seems as if it would stretch already limited personnel resources. This requirement is not required for other pets and should not be required for chickens. Three, the Department of Agriculture for the State of Georgia allows the sale of eggs with possession of an egg handling license. We request that the city allows the sale of eggs using the state requirements. This would also allow others to benefit from backyard chickens without having to get chickens of their own. Four, we would like the number of chickens allowed to begin at six for a quarter acre and scaled up accordingly. Residents can have six dogs, why not six chickens? We feel that six chickens would have far less of an impact on surrounding neighbors than six of any other animal. Five, we would like ducks to be added to the list of acceptable fowl. Ducks are excellent pets, good egg layers, and people who are allergic to chicken eggs can often tolerate duck eggs. While the exclusion of turkeys and geese is understandable, they are primarily meat birds, and we support the ban of animal slaughter within the city limits, ducks are no more intrusive than chickens. And six, having overly complex requirements will provide an incentive for people to keep chickens while ignoring the requirements. The proposed legislation has also prompted a response from Animal Control. The members of our group have identified many aspects of their presentation with which we disagree, but in the interest of time, we are going to address just a few of them. First, the issue of disease. Yes, chickens can carry disease, as can all living organisms, but we take issue with the exaggerated sense of danger with which Animal Control characterizes chickens. There have been salmonella outbreaks caused by pet turtles, E. coli outbreaks have been caused by pet reptiles, not to mention flour and alpha alpha sprouts. Toxoplasmosis is a serious disease which is spread by cats, yet they are not seeking to prevent cat ownership. They describe avian influenza as a theoretical public health hazard. Is it wise to make public policy decisions based upon theoretical hazards, or diseases found mainly in the Midwest? Chickens are no different than any other pet. The majority of these disease risks can be eliminated by proper handwashing, which is a good practice, no matter whether one has touched a chicken, handled money, or stepped into a public restroom. Animal Control also addressed the issue of noise. Many people can empathize with the frustrations of having to tolerate a barking dog in the neighborhood. Chickens do not bark. They cackle on occasion, but they do not bark. In fact, at night, they make no noise at all unless a predator has entered their coop. Dogs bark at night, male cats make horrible screeching noises at night, chickens do none of these things. When considering costs, the eggs that one typically buys from the grocery store are not the same eggs that one gets from their own backyard chickens. To purchase pastured eggs that are nutrient-dense, free of chemicals, and humanely raised, the cost would be more in line with $4 to $5 per dozen. Also, according to Georgia Department of Agriculture, eggs may be sold for up to 45 days after being washed and packed. Either way, we do not see why the cost of freshly laid eggs is even a concern of Animal In regards to additional personnel resources, eliminate the site pre-inspections, and this becomes a moot point. In fact, amendment of the current ordinance may decrease the workload of Animal Control as they will not have to address cases of people having chickens illegally, but only cases of chickens that are causing problems.
That's your five-minute warning, I'll put another five minutes on there for you.
I would like to use as an example some new legislation that has been enacted by the State of Texas in the city of Austin, Texas. The State of Texas has enacted State Bill 1620, which states that no municipality within the State of Texas may prohibit citizens from keeping chickens. They may place standards and restrictions, but they may not prevent it. The State of Texas recognizes that the right of an American to produce their own food is so important that they have protected this right in their state law. Austin, Texas, as part of their Zero Waste Initiative, has offered chicken-keeping classes to their citizens. Those who take the class and begin keeping chickens will receive a $75 check from the city. Austin is not charging its citizens a fee for the privilege of keeping chickens. It is paying their citizens to do so in recognition of the benefits that chickens offer to a community. I know that Columbus has completed many projects to make itself an attractive and progressive city, and some of these projects have been very expensive. Here is an opportunity for our city to take its place among progressive cities, and it will not cost the city a cent to do so. All that we need to do is pass this legislation while eliminating the pre-inspection clause. The fact of the matter is, people in Columbus are keeping chickens, lots of people. You could approach this widespread non-compliance by enacting some draconian measures to crack down upon these illegal chicken keepers, but is that the kind of relationship that you want to have with your constituents, especially when some of us have come before you so respectfully asking for your help? And who would enforce a crackdown on chicken keeping? Animal Control, of course, and they would probably need additional resources to do so. What we are asking for now is what we originally asked for in our presentation to you. Make a simple change to the current ordinance that reduces the amount of property required to own chickens from two acres to that of an average city lot. The current ordinance already contains measures to protect others from any harm that may be caused by an irresponsible owner. A best-case scenario would be to make this simple change, but if additional measures must be implemented, we ask that those measures be no more cumbersome than those required to own any other pet. In closing, I would like to say, I often see the success of our city measured in numbers, such as the amount of revenue collected, tourist dollars attracted, money spent on various projects, and crime statistics. To me, it seems that the greatest measure of a community's success is the quality of life that is enjoyed by its citizens. This is something that cannot be measured in numbers, but is evident in the ability of the citizens to do those things which provide them with happiness, provided that they do not do those things at the expense of others. I hope that the arguments that we have put forth here tonight are compelling enough to convince you that chicken-keeping within the city limits is one of those things, and enacting the changes that we have asked for in this ordinance is a vote for success for our city. And I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much, and we very much appreciate your passion. Council keeps an open ear and mind to all of these things, we're just trying to balance all the constituents' concerns, as you know, so thank you, and continue to send us information.
Okay, thank you.
And there's no further questions at this time, we appreciate your time this evening. All right, next we have Ms. Robbie Branscombe, who would like to speak to us about Let's Grow Steam X regarding upcoming events. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you would, Ms. Branscombe, just give your name and address for the record.
Certainly. Robbie Branscombe, PO Box 5114, Columbus, Georgia 31906. Robbie Branscombe, P.O. Box 5114, Columbus, Georgia 31906. I would like to start off by thanking the council for allowing us the privilege to come here and share what we are doing with Let's Grow STEAM. And of course, Madam Mayor, thank you for allowing us to come before you today. Let's Grow STEAM X is an organization that is educationally-based for youth in our community. I am the founder of Let's Grow STEAM X, as well as the CEO and President. And I am happy to be here today with a board member, Lionel Haynes. Our organization, which was actually started in 2011 as part of the Community Fair, has had numerous successes. And I'll start with 2015. So, 2015, once I actually acquired the organization from the Columbus Civic Center, I started by just doing some grassroots work in the community with local YMCA's, churches, and through community events, working with students to expose them and allow them the opportunity to have STEAM experiences. STEAM being science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. From 2015, I partnered with two longtime friends, LaShan Ferguson and Tashi Singleton. LaShan is an educator out of Warner Robins, and Tashi Singleton is here locally, and we actually formalized the platform. 2016, we had a wonderful opportunity to co-host Stimulate with First Robotics and Columbus Makes It. Our role in that event was to organize and orchestrate the Youth Career Expo. We galvanized over 65 different organizations to come out and speak to over 2,000 youth about careers and how they can align themselves, or their talents and their gifts, with future career paths, as well as entrepreneurial opportunities. That event was a huge success and we knew that we were on to something. We also host the STEAMX Competition, which is a yearly event, and in that same year, we had over 900 students that participated in the STEAMX Competition. Now, this is not an event that's required by the school district, however, we do have support from the Skokie County School District, and this year, we're pleased to announce that Russell County School District has come on board. In that event, you have over 900 students that go to our website, they register for free, they pick a project, they complete the project, they bring it in and we put it on display for the community to come out and judge, and then we award prizes. 2016 was a great year for us. However, we recognized that we wanted to work in closer proximity with those that we chose to serve, which is youth. And so, we are pleased to announce that 2017, we are reintroducing an event that is wholesome and specifically geared to youth. We are introducing the River City Soapbox Derby. Soapbox Derby is not a new event for our community, however, it is an event that we believe we can add a STEAMX twist to. We've had great success since we've kicked off spring break. We've served over 150 youth in the community by partnering with Columbus Parks and Recs, Columbus Tech, Boy Scouts, and various other organizations. We go into the Parks and Recs facilities, we provide all of the materials, all the cars, and the children are registered on our website and we work with them to build the cars. We do that because we recognize that $800 is quite a bit of investment for parents to make for a new activity. However, parents have come on board wholeheartedly to participate, to work with their youth, to help us build these cars. And we are looking forward to a great Soapbox Derby, July 29th, on 17th Street.
That's your five-minute warning.
Yes, ma'am. With that being said, we just wanted to come here today to share that with the community, with the council, and as for your support, we are doing this totally through community support. And some of our sponsors, I would, you know, hate not to mention, the sponsors that are helping us with this, Liberty Utilities, PTAP, Columbus Tech, Fountain City Classic, are just a few of the sponsors. But then we also have partners who help us facilitate the racer clinics, and those are Columbus Parks and Recs, the Marshall Department, Chattahoochee Council, Wright Legal Group, Mathnasium, and Overflow Ministries, as well as quite a few more, they're on the front of the flyers. At this time, Lionel, do you have anything you would like to say?
I would just want to, good evening, I'm Lionel Haynes Jr. And I wanted to make sure that you all knew about the racer clinics that's upcoming, which is gonna be on June 3rd and June 10th at Northside Recreation Center. At these racer clinics, the youth are able to come out and get an alternative educational experience that they might not see in school. We held one clinic this past Saturday at 29th Street Gym, where we dealt with them with polymers, we had them do the slime thing, for example. So, those are the types of things that we're doing, as well as help to build the cars for the racer, for the racing, that's gonna take on July 29th. That's why I wanted to let you all know and invite you all out to racer clinics, as well as the event on July 29th. We would love to see you all there, and I hope to see you then.
And I would just like to add one last thing. With the clinics, again, the clinics are free, and the... Are we okay?
I think that's their sign that we have timed out, but you just go on.
Oh, well.
You just go on.
The clinics are free, and they are open to the community. We only ask that you go to our website, which is at www.letsgrowsteam.org to register. There is a $65 registration fee, however, for the actual derby. But again, we provide the insurance, we provide the vehicles, and they are actually racing for a jackpot of $300 for first place, and we thank the community for that. And second place is $200, and third place is $100. We are looking for this event to grow with our community, because the kids can actually race up until '21, and they are actually eligible for international competition, which is in Akron, Ohio. And so, we are growing our program so that we can actually participate in that. Again, we thank you for this time, and we look forward to seeing you July 29th.
Wonderful, well, first of all, thank you so much for what you're doing. Lionel, it's so good to see you back at Budget Time. I thought maybe you were coming to help us out, I wasn't sure, but we might need you before it's all over. Let's do, let's see now, we've got a couple folks want to say hello, we've got Counselor Woodson.
Good evening, thank you so much, this is very exciting. Can you email us the flyer and the dates and stuff so that we can share with our friends and family and the website? Could you repeat the website a little bit slower, so if the audience is listening, they're able to write it down very quickly?
Certainly. Our website is www.letsgrowsteam.org, and our phone number where we can be reached directly is 706-577-3409.
My next question was, what is the age group?
The age group this year is 7 to 16. However, Soapbox Derby is open to youth through educational competitions, not competitive, but educational, we can open it up at 5:00. And it can go all the way up to '21.
Well, I'm excited, I'll probably be out there, I need the info.
Please do, please come.
Probably hear my grandson.
I didn't really want to ask this, but, since you said you may come out, we would love for one of the council members, or maybe two, to maybe open up the event through the opening ceremonies and maybe have you go down in a soapbox car, because we do have adult cars.
Well, send me the information, I'm interested, and I have an eight-year-old grandson that I think he would have a ball. I think that's something that him and Awalita can do together, so.
Certainly.
Send me the information, and I look forward to it, that's very exciting. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Counselor Barnes.
Robbie, thank you and Lionel for what you've done. And the fair at the Civic Center was huge, and I anticipate this to be equally as huge. Lionel, it's good to see you, how's your dad?
He's doing well, thank you.
As always, be sure to tell him I said hi. Thank you both for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Counselor Huff.
Good evening, good to see you both.
Good evening.
I just wanted to backtrack and take Robbie down memory lane for just a minute.
Uh-oh.
We all sat in a meeting at the Civic Center, was that last year, or the year before?
Probably the year before.
Year before. And we had all these people in a room trying to decide how to do different things, and Robbie's looking to try to carve out her little niche and do what she had to do. And we talked about you being persistent and staying focused. You had a great idea, and she felt that the world was a little bit against her at the time. And I just wanted to publicly thank you for sticking with it. You knew you had a great idea, you knew it would be good for the kids and the community, and we don't have a lot of activities. So, this is resurrecting one from the past that is working very well. So, continue doing what you do. You got my fraternity brother next to you, so I know you'll be just fine.
Thank you so much, Mr. Huff.
And I'll try to be there if I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you very much, appreciate all you do, look forward to the Soapbox Race.
Okay.
Alright.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next we have Mr. Robert Arnett, he would like to speak to us about requesting a change in council's ethics ordinance. Good evening, Mr. Arnett, if you'd just state your name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Robert Arnett. I appear before council today as a private citizen of Columbus to propose changes to council's ethics ordinances and protocols. I'd like to say I do not represent any organization or group, but I do represent a growing voice in the community for those who would like to see greater fairness and, you know, more ethics transparency in government. Though our current council obviously did not originate the ordinances and protocol to which I shall refer, nonetheless, these ordinances, protocol, no longer serve in the best interest of our city, and therefore, I request they be changed, proposal. I request council to amend the ordinances to prohibit councilmen from voting if it benefits an organization of which the councillors are a member. And I request changes in ethic ordinances to apply to all public officials and not just councillors. The need for this changed ethic ordinances only came to my attention very, very recently when I attended a public meeting regarding the closure of a portion of Leonard Street, the street I live on, to give the land to St. Paul's Church for their building expansion program. And at that public meeting, it was, I learned that two council members are members of St. Paul's Church. They had already made up their mind as to how they were going to vote on this proposal without any input whatsoever from the neighborhood. And under existing Georgia ethic laws and council ordinances, they did not have to recuse themselves because they had no financial interest in the land. To me, this is such an inequitable ordinance and even ludicrous that they wouldn't have to recuse themselves as conflict of interest. I don't think I need to discuss that further. I'm gonna ask if Ms. Judy Thomas will be kind enough to take the lead on council to get this ordinance changed and that a transparent council vote be held, so we'll know where all of councillors stood. Second matter I wish to discuss with you, again, only just learned of a week ago, attending a meeting in our neighborhood regarding the closure of Leonard Street, in which the mayor was gracious enough to come, speak to us candidly about how city government worked. We didn't even know, she told us, "You got the wrong person here, you need your councilman here." And in that conversation of her explaining to us how it worked, I learned that in most cases, most cases, the protocol of this council is to follow the recommendation based on lead counsel. So, I thought, well, you know, that seems fair enough. Most of you have full-time jobs, city doesn't pay you very much, that's for sure. And this is just, you know, efficient use of councillors' time. But then I reflected on it deeper, and I thought, no, this is wrong, this is not right, this is not fair, and this is bad government. Council was not set up for one person to have 10 votes. It was set up for 10 council members to have one vote each. So, if the former were the case, we would just obviously need what? One council person to govern for the whole city. The existing protocol may have initially worked well when it was originated, but over the years, with the growth of special interest groups, huge organizations, and wealthy churches, the...
That's just your...
The effect of this protocol is to disenfranchise the citizens of this city and shift power to the special interest groups and wealthy. Few hypothetical examples, I think, will make this perfectly clear. If any of it seems to fit any of you, totally coincidence, I don't know what anybody's profession is. Let's take the example, expanding a church-building program, closure of a street. What if a councilman sells insurance and has clients in that church? He's not a disinterested party. What if people in that church contributed to his campaign fund? He's not unbiased. What if a bank hires one of you to work for it, to have a direct link to council for changing zoning in the city to enhance its property holdings? At least in the case of changing zoning, certainly said councilperson working for the bank isn't a disinterested party. So, I just want to request that this one-person, 10-vote thing be discontinued. There's an inherent great, great danger in it. If you're not very careful and continually vigilant, each of you just cooperate with each other to have complete autonomy within your own district. And that's bad government, and it also will destroy the harmony and well-being of a city. Another point I request council to consider, which I learned about at the meeting, again, thanks to the mayor, we wouldn't even known about it in our neighborhood, this possibility to have a compromise put on the presentation of what's the proposal that's presented. And I'd just like to suggest that somehow, it seemed to me, it's councilman's responsibility, not the mayor's, to educate dissenting groups in a district, is there is a possibility to have your compromise put on the proposal for all of you to vote on. Again, we wouldn't have known about it had it not been for the mayor. I do want to add, our councilman, we learned it, emailed him, everything was great. He'll put it on the proposal, let us know if you have more suggestions, but we didn't know about it, and somehow, I think you need to educate your people in your district. In conclusion, I'd like to mention that Columbus has all of the resources necessary to be one of the greatest cities in southeastern U.S., for sure. All we need is, I'm gonna say, fair, ethical, progressive government, and a government that will attract people to the city rather than... that will attract people to the city rather than, you know, people wanting to move away. So, uh, I ask also that each of you be cognizant, as you're performing your duties here in council, to the big picture, and more specifically, to the absolute interdependence of mankind's destiny with higher universal divine laws. And, uh, if you will believe and accept that our destiny and well-being depends on higher law, then of course, you will want to operate this city and government on the highest level we can, because it's sowing the seeds for well-being and prosperity in our city. Destiny has brought all 10 of you together as elected officials to make Columbus a model of fair and ethical government for our state, for our country, and I would suggest for Washington as well. So in determining the proposed changes that you want to make to council's government to make it more ethical and fairer to all, I ask each of you to follow your conscience, which is the moral compass within each and every one of you. So in closing, we had a nice, long prayer at the beginning of the meeting. I pray that God will inspire you to perform your civic duties with the purity of the heart and to conscientiously fulfill your responsibilities to every citizen. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett. We're so glad you came, and we're so glad it looks like there is going to be a compromise. We do take all of these issues, whether it's zoning, or street closings, or whatever it might be, so seriously. And, and when there's opposing views, it's always difficult, and so we're glad when people can come together with compromise and maybe even get a better solution. So we'll see, and they'll take it very seriously. Thank you.
I'm over. I'm supposed to be...
And you can give it to the clerk there if you want to, and she'll get it to everybody. She'll email it to everybody. Thank you so much. And, and we do follow the state ethics rules. Um, you know, we can do different things, obviously, the state, but that's what we follow so far. So we... And the ones that are in our charter.
Do you not have stricter laws for our city than the state?
We could. Mm-hmm. And I think we do. Why don't we let the city attorney just, uh, clear it up real... since he's got it off the top of his head? Clifton, where are we on that?
Well, a lot of these points, you can take under advisement. Our Charter Code of Ethics is passed by the General Assembly in Atlanta, and, uh, of course, it can be amended by them at any time when they're in session.
Yeah.
And some of these ideas may be something y'all want to talk to your legislators about, uh, as far as changes.
And, Mr. Arnett, we might need you to step back a little bit. It's just, it's something that gets everybody excited when you come up, uh, close like that. But, uh, I know, you're just trying to hear. I appreciate that. Uh, Clifton speaks low sometimes, so, um, but, uh, but yeah, but we appreciate your thoughts. Mayor Protim.
Mr. Arnett, I just want to say, most of the councilors, we take in consideration to what not only the constituency say to us, the people that it has an impact on. We may listen to our fellow counselor who's over that district, but as to me, when I vote, I make up my own man, 'cause I have to be able to tell you why I did what I did, when I do it.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I hope that, um, eases your mind a little bit, and we appreciate your time this evening.
Not for me, that's true. Same.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We, we do appreciate that. All right. Um, next we have Mr. Dwayne Melvin. I don't think I saw him here. No? And then, uh, let's see, Randallitt Taylor? No? Okay. Um, moving on, Mr. Jeffrey Brogdon, uh, representing Sheridan residence, wants to speak to us about water overflow from a new subdivision. Good evening.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me for the dry mouth. My name is Jeff Brogdon, and I'm representing here, uh, other residents of Sheridan Forest, Sheraton Forest, excuse me.
Address. I'm sorry.
This is...
Uh, just, it doesn't have to be the number, just the street address.
I, I live on, in Uptoe, on Cross Creek Road.
Great.
And I'm representing my father-in-law, who lives on Marriott Drive. And that's the young man sitting in the back.
All right.
Okay? All right. And Mr. Derek Pinkney here is a resident. Ms. Christina, uh, Northington is a resident, and Ms. Frances Peer is a resident. And Mr. Jeff Lamar was unable to be with us. He is out of town. We're here today to talk about flooding that's happening in Sheridan Forest, uh, concerning the overflow of water coming from the new Sears Pond South development. And so we have some pictures and some videos, and we have... It's not transitioning.
I'm holding that time.
The problems we have existing is the fact that we have flooding after rainfalls of two to five inches, lingering pools of water that smell and attract mosquitoes after that, destruction of property, inability to use personal property for days due to the saturation of the land, environmental erosion, and lack of appropriate drainage from the property. This is Mr. Darrell Pink... Derek Pinkney's, uh, residence. This is some of the issues that's going on, his pools of water there, tremendous amount of, uh, water coming off of his back of his yard through his, uh, driveway, and he has... this has caused buckle fence in the back of his yard. This is my father-in-law's house, Mr. Lloyd Ammons. This per... first picture is his next-door neighbor and the back of him, Ms. Peer. That's the fence line, and that's the flood line that comes down to, into a area there in back of his shed, you can see on the second slide. That's a, that's a one-and-a-half-inch drop, a one-and-a-half-foot drop, um, from, uh, his, where that dropped, and then it goes into a French drain system. That's what it looks like when it's dry. Then, um, where you see the French drain runs between the path of the bushes, that's the exit of the French drain, and that's what happens when the, uh, it's overtaxed. That's, uh, erosion, uh, from, um, the rain in his backyard, which two years ago was fully, fully green. No problems in it whatsoever. Now, he really has no backyard. This is property damage that took place. He had a major foundation problem that he had to correct in 2000, in, end of 2015, first part of 2016. It resulted in repair of over $17,000 to his home. These are the repairs. This is inside the house. These are things that have not been repaired to this point. Uh, separation of the wall to, from the ceiling, uh, cracks in the wall. Uh, this is Mrs. Francis Peer's house. Uh, you see back there, all the vegetation's gone because of the development where they had it. Um, this is the river flow. If you'll see, her driveway is, uh, very wet there. It flows very down the hill to her driveway. That's the back of her yard in the middle of a ma... uh, major rain. Uh, this is a yard, and if we could, that's a video. If we could play a little bit of that video. This was this past Saturday, the rainfall that took place this past Saturday. This is the back of her yard, right here. As you see, the water's standing. It's going down just a little bit, but that's a level yard. This, the, this is the water coming down from Sears Pond Two, and it also comes back up the way there, too. This is the water going down toward my father-in-law's house, going through the yard, down the fence line. And if you'll see, you'll eventually get over to where the, where there is a going down. This is in back of Mr. Pinkney's home. You see the ve... this is a easement. And, and, um, it's a drainage easement that goes to a culvert. We will see that in a minute. This is overgrown, and this is level area here. It does not go downward.
Right.
Now, we've had Mr. Councilman Barnes out to look at this. He's, he has seen these things himself. Um, then this is where Mrs. Peer had to put up a barrier to keep water from going into her, uh, uh, screened-in porch there on the other side and to destroy that. This is Mrs... this is, uh, Mr. Chris Northington's Marriott Court, uh, home. This is where, if you'll see, over to the left side there, uh, water eroding the infrastructure to his property there, in the back and in the front. Also, uh, the property damage is the water coming off where he cannot grow grass is also, and this is an easement also, his back part is an easement, uh, this is pulling his, uh, pool lining away from his pool. Uh, Mr. Jeff Lamar, this was taken about four days after a rainfall, and you can still see water coming off of the curb there in front of his house. This is Sears Pond. This was an aerial view before the houses were being built. Uh, if you'll see there, and below that is, uh, the residence of, of where sit... where Marriott Drive and Marriott Court is. You see Sears Pond Two is above that area. It slopes down to that area. This is the water flow. If you can see, and according to City Inspector John Kennedy, who I met with on two occasions, he said there's a 14-foot drop from the entrance of the subdivision to the lowest point, which is above... the lowest point is below the retention pond. Is below the retention pond. And that's what goes into the easement, which then, when the easement overflows, comes into the yards and down to my father-in-law's house also. You'll see the water flow there.
You're five minutes...
And this is an official area, the plat, um, that Mr. Pinkney was able to provide to us, and it does not show Sears, uh, Sears Pond's, uh, Two, but it does show you that along the backside of everybody's home is an, is an drainage easement. These are not draining properly. I'm sure if we looked at the plat of the new Sears Pond Two development, we would also see an easement on their side. Okay? Uh, we were not able to obtain that. Uh, if you would pass all three of these at the same time, these are videos of this past week's rainfall. These can work together. That's the French drain from my father-in-law's house. And if you go up the road, if you go up here on here, this is going up Mrs. Pinkney's, and this is my father-in-law's. Uh, this is on the right side that you're seeing, is the water flow coming off Mr. Pinkney's And you'll see the different water flow. And then it's going down in front of my father-in-law's house. But if you'll see above there, the water flow is less. That's because on the backside of those homes, they have a paved easement that actually drops down from Macon Road all the way down through the culvert, which you'll see in a moment. Just go ahead and go to the next slide. These are the culverts. You'll see over here, the easement affected the, uh, the effective residence, not concreted and is overgrown with underbrush through Mr. Peer's yard. We also see, there's the culvert. That culvert has the, coming in from the, uh, Sears Pond Two, Retention Pond. Also, there, here is the paved area on the right-hand side, coming down from Macon Road. It, the, this culvert then feeds into the, uh, sewer line on the city. If you'd hit all three of these two at the same time? This is the culvert that's in back of Mr. Pinkney's home. As you see, the one where the, where the overgrowth is and where water is slightly coming down, that is the area coming down from their homes. You see the other side, this is also the backside of, uh, uh, the growth. These are different areas where the, where the water is flooding the area. You can see that. It goes down into the, it goes down into this retention area here. This is below the retention pond that's up there in the subdivision also. The retention pond flows into this. Now, this is the retention pond. If you'll hit both of those at the same time. This is the retention pond. This is, this is up in Sears Pond's Two. Now, if you'll see, they've got a drainage problem already, that the grass is not even growing. You're going to have these residents coming to council also, because the water comes off a hill above them and flows into this areas also. It is a mess up there right now. So the water's not growing. If you follow the line, um, and I'm pointing right there to the retention pond, to another drain that comes into the retention pond, that's to the side of it. The retention pond needs to be further back. It was, that's just all it needs to be. But the water behind the retention pond flows down. And I want to get through this. If you'll follow, if you see this, this follows a natural, and it's already trenched in. Uh, the developer, um, put up a barrier there. This past rain, it broke through that barrier and came down again as mud. So that's just to give you a little... In a summary, we would like the following actions: pave the easement behind these homes and make it a downward slope so it flows into the culvert, so it will not come into the yards. Meet with city engineers, developers, and council. I will tell you this, since this has been done, there's going to be a meeting that Mr. Pinkney is going to meet with them, uh, tomorrow at 3 o'clock to discuss this further. We wanted to make you aware of it, because this is a major concern. All these people, including my father-in-law, my father's already made investment, but these are homes that he... this home he's been in since 1977, and they pay taxes now, and they're taxpayers. They're essentially negotiating a solution between Sears Pond, Marriott Court, Marriott Drive residents, our developments, so that we can have a resolution to this and save yards, save foundations, and save property. We thank you.
Um, sir, let me ask a, a couple of questions to orient myself on this. I know, I'm not as familiar with it as, as probably Counselor Barnes, but is that a... is that our easement, or is that the developer's easement?
It's, it's all, so that easement was there before the development was there. It was, I take it, a city-owned easement. I'm not sure.
Okay, so you think it's a city-owned easement? I was just wondering if the developer came and purchased it from each property owner, or, and, and he owned it somehow?
I...
Or if it's a city?
No, no, no.
Okay. Okay. All right. And, um, all right, I, I may have some more questions, but let me see what else we got going on here. I think we got some folks lined up. Uh, Counselor Barnes?
Thank you. Um, I walked this area a couple of times. What's really interesting is that the flow of the water is not even going into the retention pond. It's bypassing, going directly, the slope of the, the topography of the, the land is such that just common sense tells you, the way the land is, that with the slope of it, it's going right into the back of these homes, and it's been going in the back of these homes for some time. Um, Mr. Brogdon, with your, um, father-in-law, I went inside his home, and we actually took the pictures of where it's been separating, but it's been separating for quite some time outside, and of course, it's causing a damage in about five or six places on the inside of his house. Um, Mr. Ammons has done some repairs on his own to it, but there, I noticed a number of places on the outside of his home where there's continual separations because of the flow of the water. Also, with Ms. Peer's, the back of her place, I mean, we went out there when it was raining, and you saw from the film the volume of the, the water. Um, it, it was just tremendous. And there were some areas where you just stepped in, you just sunk into the ground just from the sheer volume of the water. Um, fortunately, some individuals from the city, uh, they did, they, they have come out, and they've been in discussion, but what needs to happen is to have, um, the engineers come out, because the, the individuals from the city were very helpful, but they're limited, because they don't have the engineering knowledge or experience on how to really rectify the problem. There was a one gentleman that came out, and, and the, the homes that are being built, those residents are going to have a continual problem, because if you go out there, you see the flow of the water, they're going to have the identical, identical situ... situation. You're going to have a separation from the foundation, just from the way that the slope of the, of the, of the terrain is. So it's just, this has been going on for some time. And if he, Mr. Brogdon hadn't called me, and I hadn't actually gone out there in the days that it rained, I wouldn't have even, I wouldn't have noticed it. But if you just think common sense, the way the, the, the property slopes, and for the fact that the retention pond is not, is not catching any of the, the water at all. It's going directly into the backs and on, um, the one, Chris's house. That's at the bin. He actually, he's actually being hit from both ways, from the flow of the water, from, uh, Macon Road, as well as from Pond Two. Um, Mr. City Manager, you remember the problems that, that you had, the individuals from, um, you know where I'm coming, where they, we, you had someone come in and, and actually really do some investigation? That's what really needs to, to happen in this regard as, as well.
Yeah.
Is to have some, because these individuals here are actually in danger of losing their homes. And the, um, the one thing that's by your, uh, Derek's home, that is, that was laid down by the city.
Correct.
But it's not functional, as you can, as you can see.
Not at all. The water's just overtaking it in that little, small area. And that little small area is probably this deep.
Yes.
And the water is just going straight over. And I know 10, 10 feet inside of my privacy, it's, you know, just completely saturated. You know, when you walk on it, you'll, you'll literally sink.
In fact, you can go, in fact, you can go there, or not even, that was heavy, you can go there on a light rain day and just walk, and in some areas, when you step, you actually sink, and just from the, the ground not able to absorb the water.
When my father-in-law has his yard mowed, there's sometimes he has to go as long as four weeks before the mowers can get on there because they's bogged down so bad. And these are push mowers, not even, some of them push mowers, not even riding, but the riding mowers can't even get on there. So, I mean, it's to the part, the saturation is so bad from the flow down, that's, that's the issue right now. What can be done to correct that from that flow? You saw the video where it's coming down from there. It's coming down. And it, you know, and that, and this is in, you know, you kind of think about, okay, rain is from that God. I'm a minister. I can tell you, that's from God. Okay? But I also tell you this, homes being built up there, and the change of the topography is man-made.
Right.
And that's where you got the issue. Where you had grass, where you had growth, and you had dirt, now you've got asphalt, roof lines, and all that water, it's got to go somewhere. Common sense tell you it is going to go south, not north. And we're south of that subdivision, not east and west of it, which the, which basically the retention pond is to the east of the development, not the south of it.
So, you're meeting with the engineers tomorrow at 3:00?
At 3:00.
Okay. And, and so, here to 4:00, you've just been meeting with inspectors and that type of thing?
Yes, ma'am. And they were told, the only thing they could do is, is to approve what the development plan had been approved by the city. That's what they enforced.
Right, right.
Development plan by the city.
Well, what I'd like to do is, council meets again on Tuesday, but I'd like to hear about it, let's see, tomorrow is Wednesday. I'd like to get a report of sort of an initial assessment of what people saw, what's going on, to make sure I understand this before there's any...
They invite you to come out.
Further, yeah, I'm going to see if I can, but it, it seems like I have something from 2:00 to 4:00 tomorrow, but that's just in my head, but I'll look to see.
Change it on.
Yeah, right, right. So, but in any event, let me check that, and then if not, I would like to get a report just to see what's going on.
I would entertain, while the rain is falling these days, walk back there.
Walk back there.
Make sure you've got good mowing.
Well, you can see from, we got a good idea from what you put up here. So, let me, let me get it to Mayor Proton.
Who's the developer of Sears Pond?
I do not know who the developer is. They're Jeff Lindsay, Jeff Hensley Homes or Lindsay Homes, Jeff Lindsay Homes. He's developed, he had the property developed. I think Moon Meeks did the property plan and presented to council. So, I'm not...
Moon Meeks is here.
So, I'm, I'm not sure of anything, who, where else, who went beyond those two things. We have met, I met with the real estate agent, Mr. Hal Davis of Development, told him we would be more than welcome to talk to Mr. Lindsay or anybody who was there. When I met, I met with John Kennedy, and I met with Chris Wallace, the builder of the property. And so, he said, I can't do anything. Of course, Mr. Kennedy said, only thing I can do is enforce what the plans say. Beyond that, take it to your councilman, take it to the city council. Here we are. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think you're at the right place. Let me turn it over to Counselor Davis.
Sounds like the gentleman you mentioned, Wallace, is probably supervisor, but the builder being from out of town, I'd like to know if we've had any other issues. I'd like to know from engineering if we've had other issues dealing with this particular builder.
Okay. We can find that out. I know when they go out there, they'll assess all that, and they'll know who, who pulled those permits and what our experience is. So, I'm sure we'll get a full report. Let's see, we've got Counselor Barnes.
Not only on these residents, but it's going to be a similar thing with these homes being built at that Sears Pond Two. They're going to have the same problems as these residents have now. And when you do go out there and you see the, the water flow, it's just unbelievable when you actually go out there and you see, and it's just common sense. I don't, I don't understand how these homes were allowed to be built with, with the topography the way it is. I'm not an engineer, but it's just common sense just tells you, and you can see from the, from the film that was taken out. We went on, on a couple of occasions to really see this here.
Okay. Well, we're going to check it out tomorrow at 3:00, and, and I know I'll get a report Tues, I guess Thursday morning, and maybe we can figure some things out, so.
I think it could be worked out, I believe, with everybody, just to say, get it, get it down, go further south. Okay? From that standpoint. And I do want to thank Ms. Lindsay Gleason and also City Manager's Office for accommodating me. Y'all tried calling me, and wrong number, and so, anyway, y'all made accommodations for us, and we thank you so much. Appreciate it.
That was my mistake. I had his number, but I, I gave Lindsay the wrong phone number. So, I'm owning that. That's why she was not able to...
Well, you're here, and we appreciate it very much.
I'm leaving just one copy, that's all I had time to make for the...
Yeah, you can give it to the clerk here.
So, if you'd like to have those, that's fine. And of course, the city, we should have our presentation.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on in our agenda. We've got Ms. Avis Love Lewis, Mama Love. She's here to talk to us about realty companies and landlords deterring prosperity in Columbus. Good evening.
Good evening, blessed evening.
If you'd just come forward and state your name.
Good evening, blessed evening. My name is Avis Lewis, Mama Love, and my first gift to you is this, to everybody. Can you hear me, or should I throw it over?
Go ahead.
First gift to you is this, to everybody. I have talked to you April the 25th. I have talked to you May the 9th, and now tonight, and I hope you invite me back in the future. I have talked to you about many things, and I do strongly believe that what you let your realty company, what you let other people that rent here in Columbus, Georgia, I strongly believe it deters prosperity in Columbus, Georgia. Because people feel things when it happened to them. People hurt when it happened to them. And when people can, they leave. Sometimes you have good people leaving, and that hurts the prosperity of Columbus, Georgia. Some of the things I would like to say, you already know my situation with 1720, 41st You know what happened to me. You know code inspection went out. You know code inspection deemed that property, gave them a 45 days. I think that was back in October or September. And you know, you allowed that case to be closed with no action whatsoever. You allowed people go to move back in there, and nothing still been done about that today. It's still closed. People are still living in that. It hurt me. I called Ms. Libby with Kenner, Parker, Ducking, and Davis the day before, and I told her I was sick. I told her my truck would be coming. The next day at 1:00, she showed up that morning and threw me out. Like I say, people feel things, and when people feel things, they react. And you are going to lose some good people. You have lost some good people because what you allowed to happen. Okay, in that case, I would like for you to take the initiative to start here, and since you've got connection with Alabama, Phoenix City, I know, pass something where if your code and inspection people go in, inspect the house, give the landlord 45 days to correct the problem. Pass a law stating, or ordinance, whatever you want to call it. Make sure they cannot put someone back in that house until you, your code and inspection people, go back in, re-inspect to make sure those items, those problems are cleared up. Make sure this happened. Put whatever you have to do, a law, or ordinance, whatever. And like the person who did mine, tried so hard to get the people to let her in after Kenner, Parker, Ducking, and Davis had that problem, she went back and back and back. She left notes on the door. She had to close the case. That should not happen anymore. It shouldn't happen. Put some in place where it can't happen, or ordinance or law. If they don't let you back in, bulldoze the place. Put that in law too.
That's your warning, just your five-minute warning.
Okay. Fix it so before anybody can move into a house that have been empty for six months, your code and inspection people have to go out, or some, maybe the electric company have to go out. Make sure those wires are safe. Make sure that house passed. Don't just let somebody live into a house that been boarded up or been empty. I don't care if the realty company is renting, I don't care if the landlord is going to rent it. If it been closed, been empty for six months, put a law, put an ordinance in place where before they turn on, before they moving anybody in there, before a utilities turn on, put a law or ordinance in place that have to be inspected. I know in one state, it have to be inspected by the power, the city. The power company won't even turn nothing on. It have to be re-inspected by the city. Please put that in place. Okay. Also, put in place where it have to be checked by a professional rodent company, and be cleared by them, and that given to code and inspection. I ducked bugs, flying roaches, I have flea bites. Put that in place, let that also be given to code and inspection. Six months, put it in place, law or whatever. Okay, next thing I want to talk about, I talked about the hurt I felt when I tried to put God's car. I went down there, I was happy. I was going to put God's car in the Veterans Parade. And when a lady called me and said, yo, this car would be number so-and-so, but I want to remind you that it's not on November 11th, Veterans Day, it's the Monday after. I said, uh-huh, repeat that, and she did. Go back, show us veterans that you really, really love us. Put Veterans Day back on November 11th. Please, put it back, whatever you have to do, law, ordinance, whatever, put it back on it, on November 11th. Okay. I did the Veterans Day. I told you to tear it down if they don't let you reinspect. I told you about how this is impairing your city. Not only bad people leave Columbus, Georgia when they hurt, you got children, your children put in a situation where your house not even worn. I'm living in a house, I moved in March the 2nd. Right now, I don't have, I didn't have my unit on that wall, I still don't have, I didn't have heat, I still don't have air. And now they, they done got at me, I put in the writing and marched, I moved in and marched. They done told me they're going to take me and throw me in the street. It hurts folks, it hurts. Don't let people be done like that. I'm an old lady, 66 years old, I shouldn't be treated like that. Children go through the same thing, they shouldn't be treated like that. Check on your law, put some laws in place, put some ordinance in place. You can do it, you can do it. Don't let your children and people live in houses that you don't want your mama to live in, houses you don't want you to live in, houses that God ain't pleased with people living in. I'm not the only one talking. I thank God for when, Mayor, when you called on that man at Talk to the Mayor's meeting back last year, I think it was September or somewhere around there, and God paved the way, because I was going to speak on the house that I was in on 41st Street. God paved the way, so you call on him first, so y'all could see, I'm not the only one displeased with what y'all allow realty company and people who rent to put in. Now, I want to say, thank y'all for allowing me to speak, you know. I love you. I love everyone, because Jesus say, love everyone is I have loved you, and I laid down my life and died. It's a growing thing to be people. It's a growing thing that I've grown through, and I, I just hope you do some of this. I hope you do some. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Mama Love.
And remember, this has been something really, really to help me. I did so much, it helped me a long time. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mama Love. We appreciate you coming. Yeah, let's see, we've got Counselor Barnes. Hold on a second here. There you go. Counselor Barnes?
Mama Love? Where are you at right now? Were you living in a place where there's no, where the people haven't even put heat in it, you know? Where is this at?
I'm at 404. I'm sorry.
Now, you can, if you, now, this is, I know, I know something I just heard from, but that is something that's...
I've been done that just twice, it really hurts.
I know, it's, can we find out where this is at?
I'm at 403 Walnut Street. I don't even have an oven. I haven't even had an oven since I've been there.
Who ran?
I bought a, when I went and buy the heater, they got mad with me because I bought the heater and said, they told me, we going to throw you back in the street, we going to throw you back in the street.
Mama, you want to know something, and I know that is hurtful, but it's disturbing. It is disturbing to me to have anyone living in a place with no heat or nothing, no air. That, that should not happen. And if we could just find out where she is at, because that's not tolerable, that's not tolerated by us.
Well, I'm leaving. I'm tired of it. I'm leaving. I'm, I had to pay, to get out of my lease, I had to pay my rent for May, $475, my rent for June, $475. I was told I couldn't stay in June, and then I had to pay an ATM fee, and they have told me, and March, they going to take me and throw me in the street.
Mama Love, we're going to do this, I'm going to have somebody come around and get the address and some information, we're going to get that to our inspectors, okay?
That should not happen.
Eric, if you would go see Mama Love and get down all the information, and so, we're going to get that.
I'm, I'm leaving, I'm leaving. I will, and I'll be gone.
No, but that should not happen, or something like that...
But I would like to get my June rent back.
Something like that, yeah, there's something like that should not occur, should not happen. That's not the way things are done in the, in the city here. And so, and my heart does go out for you.
We're going to get all that information, we're going to send some inspectors out. So, go see Eric over here, and he'll sit down with you for a minute.
Please, put some laws, put some ordinance in place.
Okay.
Help somebody else.
We will. Thank you, ma'am.
Mama Love? The young man, go with him.
Okay. Thank you, Mama Love. All right. Now, we're going to move into the City Manager's agenda. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hughley.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge to come forward, well, excuse me, Director Laura Johnson, is going to come forward and talk about the revisions and the extension being requested by Westfield on the memorandum of agreement, and it is very brief, it's like two pages, so, six slides, so it should not take very long. brief, it's like two pages, so, six slides, so it should not take very long.
We gotta look for her.
Go ahead.
All right. Just real fast, just wanted to provide a brief overview of what we're requesting on the, as an extension to the MOA and the lease agreement that we currently have with Westfield. The MOA extension between Westfield and the city approved per resolution two eighty-seven dash sixteen, it'll expire on October thirty-first of twenty seventeen. So we are asking to go ahead and request a MOA to be extended for an additional year so that it won't expire until August thirty-first of twenty eighteen. We also have a lease agreement with Westfield for the use of the Scale House, it's located at thirty-five thirty-five B South Lumpkin Road. That was also approved per resolution two eighty-seven dash sixteen. It'll also expire on August thirty-first, twenty seventeen, so we wanted to go ahead and ask to extend that lease agreement as well, to not expire until August thirty-first, twenty eighteen. We are also asking for a request, for a partnership to build a city parking lot out at that location. Track A that was sold to Westfield was actually split into three parcels, with the city maintaining ownership of A two. Westfield has asked that the city assist with the development of a parking lot on track A two, and that parking lot would be utilized by the general public for parking and access to the trail from that, at that location. But Westfield would also utilize that parking lot for their visitors to their facilities as well. The cost estimate for the proposed parking lot will be approximately six hundred thousand dollars. That'll include the clearing, grading, drainage, utilities, and paving. They've requested the city to contribute two hundred fifty thousand dollars towards that expense. Westfield would pay the remaining of approximate of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's also gonna be lighting that's required for the parking lot. They're asking for the city to contribute twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars to install that lighting, and also for the city to pay the two hundred twenty dollars per month for the utility bill for that lighting as well. The proposed funding sources would be OLOS infrastructure funding to pay for the parking lot, for the city's contribution to the parking lot, and also to pay to have the lights installed. And then the two hundred twenty dollar a month for the utility bill for the lights would be paid out of street lighting budget, the street lighting budget in the general fund. And Westfield is here to provide some additional updates on where they are in the process of actually relocating to Columbus.
Hold on, we got Counselor Thomas with a question.
I don't know if you want to take questions about what's going on.
Leo goes on, or? My question is, you said the funding source for the OLOS, did you consider using T-SLOSS money for that, the discretionary T-SLOSS money?
I'll let Pam address that. That was part of the transportation plan that I presented at one of the budget review sessions, and it wasn't slated to be used for T-SLOSS discretionary, we've used OLOS infrastructure for that particular project, but it was part of the transportation plan as we walk through. The projects from T-SLOSS that we have in FY eighteen include resurfacing, the Benning Drive Bridge, traffic calming guardrails, and the match for the Z-two-thirty projects that were presented, as well as sidewalks. So the funding for the parking lot was done with OLOS infrastructure, and it was just the way we slated the projects for transportation.
So the T-SLOSS money was not considered for this project?
For this project, but we had it, we kind of put all the projects together and assigned funding sources for those, for FY eighteen.
Do we still have funding money in the T-SLOSS discretionary fund?
At the end of FY eighteen, the balance that we show available that will go into FY nineteen is one point five million. So we still have some allocated, but the, in the T-SLOSS discretionary, you know, we had categories that council adopted, so we have four hun, we'll anticipate having four hundred available in road improvements, about twenty thousand in bridge and culvert, two twenty-five in maintenance and safety improvements, seven seventy is matching funds for projects, and then alternative transportation, a hundred thousand. So those are the categories that make up the one point five as we go into FY nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Leo Goodsell, Director of Westfield. I just want to give you an update on the site in Lumpkin, what's happening. It's been in the paper that we are having some delays in Lumpkin. They did not approve our initial permit, but we're working with them. We'll be meeting, I'll be meeting with the Stewart County Commission at a work session on June sixth. I'll give them a presentation on our project, on our update. They'll have some questions of me also to clarify some of the concerns or issues they may have. The, the number one issue at hand is what will they charge for the permit to move buildings on two-tenths of a mile of county roads? That's what's at hand right now. And they plan to, during the work session, have that worked out, so that we'll, they'll be able to then forward recommendations to the full county commission on June thirteenth to vote on what the fee structure will be for moving structures around Stewart County. And, and as, you know, as I suggested, I, I trust that we'll, we'll work through any difficulties that, there may be any concerns that they may have. There's no reason why we can't get the permits, and so, you know, we, we do really, we, we trust that we'll be able to work this out. It has caused a slight delay, but we've built in delays into this project, I think all construction projects, you always build in the contingency time and for money, and we certainly have done that as well. But meanwhile, we are still continuing to prepare buildings in Lumpkin for the move. We've got buildings ready to roll, in fact, one on wheels waiting to be hooked up to the truck to roll as soon as we get the permits. We fully expect on June thirteenth that the city, the county commission will approve a fee structure. That won't just apply to us, but it'll apply to anyone else who wants to do moving structures in Stewart County. So we are the first ones out of the chute in order to get this to happen. We're also, we're not stopping work, even in, in Columbus. Rain stops us, but when it's not raining, we're still working. We've got, we've got a couple locations ready to receive buildings here in Lumpkin, I'm sorry, in Columbus, and as soon as we get the permit, we'll be able to roll those right onto place and get them set here in Columbus in just a couple of days after we get the permit. So, any questions? That was really quick, I try to brief on all my reports.
Sure, we've got Counselor Woodson.
Thank you, Lynn, appreciate it. I just had a question, and I don't know if our staff is helping, and so, if I understand correctly, you are the first organization that will be moving buildings, so they're trying to determine the permit cost for that?
Correct. According to their new ordinances, for building ordinances, we are the first ones to be moving a structure in the county.
Do we have anything like that, that we could probably share with them? Because being your first, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned of what your cost might be in that sense, and I'm a little bit concerned if the county has reached out to ACCG for advice, or someone, you know, or GMA, you know, someone for advice, like usually when we're gonna do something that is not of the norm, or it's something new, we usually seek guidance to see what other communities our size are doing. And then based on that information, then we make our determination how we want to do it. Doesn't mean we're gonna do it exactly like that, you know, community did it, but it gives us, you know, an idea of, you know, how much or what can be done. Is there anywhere we can help them?
Well, we'll be happy to share with them our fees, our ordinances, it's always been available.
Maybe, maybe if you can get Lynn one, and during his negotiation, he can say, you know, respectfully, you know, since this is your first time, I can show you what Columbus does. And then they can look at it and go from there. Because I'm afraid that, you know, being a small community, I'm not stereotyping, I'm just afraid that if they don't have any guidance or anything, will become more difficult than if they had a guidance on how possibility to look at and the cost and what it all takes to move a building from one location to another.
Well, I'm, I'm actually very confident that they'll, they'll be, between, during the work session, we'll have an open discussion about what other communities charge, because we have a list of what other counties and cities charge, and what a, what would be considered a fair and reasonable permit fee to be. And so I think, you know, once we present all that information to them to help them on deciding what structure they'd like to use, I think we'll be able to leave the evening of the sixth with, with all confidence that they have come up with a fee structure that they're satisfied with, that they will also forward to their county commission.
Okay, I was just a little concerned, and I'm not sure if, if everything's okay once the city manager makes his points, because I see he's ready to talk, we can probably call for the resolution to extend it till two thousand and eighteen. But I'm gonna wait and see what he says, and then we'll call for the resolution.
All right, we have Counselor Davis.
So let me, look, I'm on, I'm somewhat open-minded, but yet independent in thinking as well. But this is, this is a new, what I, what I see being proposed here is a new agreement that you're asking, that you're requesting with the city, it's not the original agreement.
Well, it's-
Presentation that just came.
Well, much of it is the original, it's a revision and extension is what we're, they're asking for. But, you know, we've been before you a number of times with different resolutions. One resolution, for example, authorized city manager to enter an MOA with Westfield, relocating the Living History Museum to Columbus, Georgia, that was the first one. The second one in September of, that was August thirteen of two thousand and thirteen, in September fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, you did another resolution, two fifty fifteen, to extend the timeframe to begin normal operations of the museum.
Ms. City Manager, if I may, with all due respect, let me just get right to it, okay? I understand that, I don't have any problem with the extension, I think the extension, part of the MOU for the extension is a funding request, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, that's where I want to go, I want to go to the funding request.
Regarding the road.
That's not part of the original agreement.
That's, I mean, parking lot, that's correct.
Right, and I want to go back to remind everybody, our original agreement, I think we had some very straightforward discussion on this, exactly what everybody's commitment was at that point, and I, I think everybody agreed at that point, as a businessman, a deal's a deal, and everybody agreed to that at that point. Now, I, I would hope that, as the capital that we talked about, your, your capital funding campaign, have you reached all that?
We're about ninety-four percent at this point.
And you plan to reach that?
Oh, yes.
And that was part of our original agreement, but, you know, it's kind of, I don't want to say this, look, we, we love you guys and we're moving forward, but, you know, sometimes, you know, we're somewhat the protectors of the, of the public's money. And it's kind of like, well, if you don't ask, you might not get it, but this part was not part of the original agreement. And I want to, it, it talks about, the, the problem I'm having with it is talks about the OLOS infrastructure fund, funding. We just went through the budget dealing with parks and recs, we fund a lot of things with parks and recs through the, through the OLOS and the infrastructure, we fund a lot of other projects, paving, we fund a lot of road projects through it. I think the road project that we're doing out there now is coming out of the OLOS, if I'm not mistaken, and I can promise you, that is not going to come anywhere near the budget that's, that's being proposed. That road's gonna cost quite a bit to put in. So, at the end of the day, we're, something's gonna get taken from to, you know, to, to accommodate this request if council sees like that's where we want to go. And, you know, I question that, so like I said, I'm open-minded in thinking here, but I question, I do know there's other requests that have come before this council, and probably are in the workings right now about parking lots and things of that nature, but it'll all be put on delay on the back burner to deal with a request here. With that being said, what I do, and I cannot approve, is a request for operational cost. I cannot approve a request to install lights and fund the utility bill, I just don't think that's appropriate for the city to do. I don't think that the installation of these lights at two hundred and twenty dollars a month is, that's, that's a very, very low cost. I think that, that cost has to be revisited, but that's not, what I would view as an operational cost, that should come out of a, a operational budget, or funding or revenue that's coming from the, well, just, just the operation of Westfield, and I don't think the citizens should be liable for that on an ongoing basis.
Well, and, and counsel, let me just make clear that, this is, of course, a city property, and, and it will be a parking lot that would allow citizens access to the trail, and with Westfield coming and the economic impact that it's going to have on that area and on Columbus, you know, this is a, a proposed public-private partnership for the economic impact, for the fact that we have a trail there, it's our property, and we would do two hundred and fifty, and they would do, what, three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a partnership to create a parking lot that our citizens will have access to, to the trail, and visitors would have access to use for Westfield, and we certainly think that it is going to be a benefit to that area of our community and to all of Columbus as travelers come to visit the National Infantry Museum, those are all amenities and draws that will bring people to Columbus and put heads in bed.
And that's-
And so, and so it's about a partnership.
Well, we say that every time, every time we do these funding requests.
If that's what it is.
We've got a package that we market and sell it in, in such a way, but my point is, that's not part of the original agreement. It was never part of the original agreement. Now, we're doing a parking lot, and-
And paving that parking lot was not a part of it either, we, we got a trail there, and it was not gonna be a parking lot, and this was an opportunity.
Well, you know, like I said, I can be open-minded, but I, I think it's appropriate to express this, because it's changing, everything's changing, and, you know, I, I believe personally that that was the purpose in the conversation that we had a long time ago with the capital campaign, that all that money would be raised to cover all these costs. So either they're short of funding and they're coming to the city for help, or it's just, you know, can we get a little bit more? And I, I still think the operational cost, the city would be involved in operational cost of an operation is, is inappropriate, I just, I just believe that.
Well, and, and you're referring to operating cost as lighting the parking lot and paying the utility on the lights.
Well, they're asking, they're asking for the city to install the lights and to pay the monthly bill.
Well, on our city property and our, we're doing two fifty, they're doing three fifty, we would do the lights, and then of course, we would pay for lights on the city parking lot. It would, the parking lot will not belong to Westfield.
Ms. City Manager, I mean, that's, everybody knows that's not a question about city land. We, we entered to an agreement, part of that deal was they didn't have to go out and buy land or find land, but that's our contribution, that's all part of the contribution. I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that agreement. We've got a very accommodating lease and some future clauses in there as well, I'm just saying- some future clauses in there as well, I'm just saying that when I look at this, there's no disrespect or anything, I'm looking at it open-minded, but the, you know, it's changing, I'm concerned about it changing. Is this all that we're to expect, or are there going to be more requests down the line?
Well, we, we, as you can see, we've amended or brought you at least three different resolutions, and, and I was sharing those with you, and I think it's the last one, I can't guarantee you that, and were it not, in my opinion, a public-private partnership, a benefit to our citizens, I would not have it on my agenda. And so, you know, I don't, you're the counselor, and I can just bring you what we think is in, is going to be beneficial to Columbus and to the citizens, and, and then we'll rely on your vote.
Are you giving this confident, this council the assurance and confidence that other projects that have already been designated out of the old lost are not going to get delayed, that they will continue to be funded because of this request?
What I can tell you is we've-
Such as parks and wrecks, capital replacement?
We've presented to you a list of projects through T-Spots and O-Laws that we always bring to you in advance for you to approve, and we don't have enough money to do a lot of things that we need to do, that's why we are going through all of our capital, our projects and buildings and all of that, so our needs list is, is very long, and I'll find an opportunity-
And that's the only reason I'm having this conversation, is from that standpoint.
What's that now?
That's the only reason I'm having this conversation-
Oh, absolutely.
... is because I get, I sense that something's going to be delayed, something's not going to get funded somewhere in order to push a new request that's being put before the council, something's going to get pushed aside, and that's just because there's a limited amount of money in this fund every year.
Well-
And we've already designated a majority of it.
And Counselor, when we get done discussing this project, we're going to talk about city meals, and we're going to talk about a partnership, and so, you know, we can bring you these opportunities and, I mean, and we'll just have to rely on council to weigh them and, but we're going to bring you our best recommendation.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's good to have the discussion, I mean, isn't that true that city meals is a change of the agreement, it is a paving of a parking lot?
It's the same kind of, that's what I'd say, that we're going to have this discussion again in just a few minutes.
I don't think you want to have this, because this is, you're wrong.
Wrong about what?
You're wrong, we're talking about a T-Spots project that by law, that goes back to the original master plan of that Riverwalk, need to be completed, and that's the difference.
Well, we'll see when we get to that discussion.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely a changed agreement, but anyway, it's, it's, yeah, okay. Let's see, Counselor Thomas.
Two things, one is, Leo, how is the waterworks project on South Lumpkin Road progressing? Or do you think they're going to be completed in time for you to pull this house down that road?
They were ready on May 11th for us to roll. It's gravel, we can roll onto gravel, we can roll on, even on the shoulder, all we need is just the, the correct width and reasonably level ground. They'll probably be able to get it paved by the time we're able to get to the June 13th, which would be a fine thing, because then it's perfectly smooth, but we can roll on what's there, and the waterworks have been working with us to accommodate the movement of buildings along the way also.
And I, my other question, Mr. City Manager, we're, you're proposing a one-year extension in the lease, is that the, the norm for lease one year, or would it be helpful if we had the lease longer than one year, or would you talk about why you're looking at, I mean, we've already, we've already extended it a year a couple of times, and I guess my question is, do we need to make it longer this time, or what is the-
And perhaps, because I'm sure you didn't know that you were going to run into this problem, that you have, that's caused a delay, and, and there are unforeseen things, and what you're trying to do, it's, it's different. I don't know what you think about the one year, but certainly-
We, we still plan to open about the time this lease expires.
Okay.
So, one year may be enough for us to get to the point that we're open to the public. And then, of course, the other structure that we're leasing, the Scales Building, we won't need it after that point either, because we're using it just for meetings for the construction crews.
Sure.
We always enjoy having you come down, Leo, but if we, if we don't need to extend the lease, we could do that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Woodson.
City Manager, I just want to get back to Counselor Davis' concern and stuff, in, in reference to this request here, if I'm not mistaken, City Village was not a project that we had planned and all of a sudden they came to us. We did partnership with, we were kind of working with them, we're working with Uptown Columbus as a partnership, we worked with TSIS, we're working with the Dragonfly, we're working with Midtown, we did the parking lot with CSU and us, and CBNT we share, we have moved funds in the past to help some of these things from the Liberty Theater and then placed it back into the Liberty Theater. So, I just want you to make us, you know, remind us and help us feel a little bit more comfortable with the partnership, this is not something new, and anyone that's been in construction or been part of these moving parts, it always changes, that's why we stopped telling people, well, this project will be done by June the 15th, because of the weather or situations that, you know, might occur like that. To me, this is an awesome project, because this is, again, bringing something good to our community, something, I don't have a problem with that, because I see how we do all these other programs, and we're going to be talking soon about Second Avenue beautification with very soon, you know, we're doing the Martin Luther King, I mean, there, there's so many, I know we are an untight constraint, and I know it, but we're looking for ways to bring money, and we're looking for ways to beautify and give equality, so sometimes it takes a little money to make a little money. I don't have a problem with it, because we're open with all these other organizations, helping them to do things to beautify our community and to bring people to our community, so you can count on my support, because I've been waiting for South Lumpkin beautification for over three, four years, and I'll probably end up waiting more, and I wanted that to be done by the time you came in, because like the Infantry Museum, they reroute people, instead of bringing them, you know, you can come I-85, come down to Victory Drive, you know, make a left right there down South Lumpkin Road and you're right there, you know, there's other ways that you can come, you can come from downtown Veterans Parkway, Victory Drive, come up to South Lumpkin Road and turn, but they don't do that, because it's not beautified yet, you know, so I have no problem, because the more things that come into that area, maybe that's when they'll start beautifying that little strip right there, so that the traffic can start coming in into that, in that direction. So I thank you, and you can count on my support, thank you.
All right, so where are we? Do we need a motion for the resolution?
Yes, and I'm requesting at this time, Madam Mayor, that council authorize me to enter into an amended MOA with Historic Westfield to extend the timeframe to begin normal operations, to extend the lease agreement for the property at 3535B South Lumpkin Road, and to revise the language within the MOA to incorporate a partnership between Columbus Consolidated Government and Westfield for the development of a public parking lot. That is what I'm asking council to approve today.
So motion, is there a second? All right, is there any, any further discussion? Seeing none, you may record your votes. That, yeah, is there any further to the motion? Hold on a second.
Of the parking lot?
That's to include?
Yes, yes, sir, that, that is to include the $250,000 partnership, where they're going to put in 350,000 for a total of 600,000 to develop that parking lot on city property that our citizens will have access to the trail. It is, it includes where the city would contribute to install lights for the parking lot on our property, the parking lot and lighting would be funded from the O-Law structure, as we've talked about, and the city would be responsible for the utility bill for the lights, and we estimate that at $220 per month, and it'll be paid utilizing the streetlighting budget in the general fund that we currently have for all streetlights, and so, that, that's included in the request, yes.
Well, and just for the record, I, I can live with the request on the, on the parking lot, as long as it's, that we're, we're not going to be required to do more in the future, but I cannot with the, with the utility and the paying of the monthly bills and all, I just don't, I, I'm not going to support that with any request, whether from a nonprofit or the, or the private sector, so, that being said, Mayor, I'm finished.
Okay, all right, and it is queued for your electronic voting, go ahead and record your vote. Okay, and, yeah, it does, let's see, I think we have one more, who's not, oh, yeah, I guess that's it, for some reason, okay, and that's good, it does pass.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to ask, and thank you, Leo, for coming tonight, you and Ryan, Madam Mayor, I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Pam Hotch to come up on the next item, city meals exchange and easement agreement, and she's going to talk to you with a very brief presentation before we ask your approval.
This is, good evening, council, this is related to the City Mills project for the Riverwalk, this is an exchange and easement agreement, and it was a very complicated agreement, it's attached to ECAP for your review, there's about almost 20 different exhibits, so I tried to summarize that in a presentation, so you can see where we started and where we ended, this was to get the easement that's required for the City Mills Riverwalk project. I'm also joined tonight by Justin Krieg, he represents City Mill Properties LLC, so if there's any questions, he should be able to respond to those as well from City Mills Properties. The Riverwalk Connection Project, as you recall, was part of the Transportation Investment Act of 2010, where the River Valley region approved a 1% transportation special purpose local option sales tax, which we refer to as a T-Spots, in 2012, which began collections in January of 13, and it's a 10-year sales tax. The completion of the Riverwalk projects includes two components, that's at City Mills and Bib Mill, this is related to the City Mills portion of the project, but the total project for the completion was budgeted at $10 million for T-Spots. Just to give you an idea of where we're talking about, this is the current Google Earth view of the City Mills property. Can you make it work and draw on here? So, right now, you can see that the Riverwalk comes here, and it extends up here on the north side of City Mills, and what this project will do is connect the Riverwalk through these two buildings at the City Mill property, to provide that connectivity for the Riverwalk. This is the same view, but shows the different parcels that's owned, some by the city and some by City Mills, the two buildings that we're trying to go between to connect the Riverwalk is owned by City Mills Property LLC, so we have been negotiating with City Mills property for several years, there was a previous owner that we had actually, before my time, they had been working with to get an easement between those two buildings, so that we could connect the Riverwalk, the property was sold, so we kind of started over, and we've been working with them to get a easement agreement, there's some components of that easement agreement that kind of, there was a glitch, and so we've been really working and negotiating to get a solution that's acceptable to both the city and City Mill properties. This first diagram shows you the different ownership of the property that's involved, the green is owned by City Mills Property LLC, the orange is owned by the city, and City Mills property, City Mills Property LLC in the orange stripe, has a parking easement on city property, so this is where we started, and we're trying to get an easement between the two buildings and negotiate with City Mill property, because they have a parking easement that provides parking availability to their development. So after the exchange and easement agreement, the next slide just shows you where we ended up in this negotiated process, the green, again, is the City Mill Property LLC property, what's in orange striped is city-owned property with a parking easement, and then what's in the pink color would be the easement that's granted from City Mill Property LLC to the city for the construction of the Riverwalk. So I'm just going to go back, this is currently, and the, the property that's situated now, and after the exchange and easement agreement, this is how the ownership of the property and the easements will look on this same parcel. The net impact to this agreement is revenue to the city of $100,758, easements are worth money, property exchange is worth money, so the net agreement is $100,758 to the city. There's also a commitment, it's interesting that we talked about Westfield, we have the same agreement with City Mill Property LLC, to contribute $250,000 for a shared parking lot for both owners, we will have dedicated 19 public parking spaces, and this will be access for the Riverwalk at this location, and it will also provide the access for, or parking for the City Mills development. There's two slides, this one and the next one, that shows the diagram of how the Riverwalk will be done in between the two buildings, just to show you the location of where that's going, you can see the Riverwalk here, going through the two buildings, and then it picks up, same place, this is the Riverwalk going through the two buildings, and will connect to the existing Riverwalk on the other side of city property. In the last slide, this has been provided to us by City Mill Property LLC, I don't want to, you to think that there's any commitment from the city for the development of this property, but this is what they intend the property to look like after the development, and if Justin wants to make any comments just from City Mill property and where they plan to move forward with this project, I'm sure he'll be happy to respond to those questions as well.
I think, let's see, Counselor, Counselor Woodson?
How many, go back to the, how many, I saw that we would get 19 public parking spaces, how many parking spaces are proposed for that parking lot?
There's parking on both sides of the City Mills property, let me go back here, you can see they're planning to put parking in this location- You can see they're planning to put parking in this location, and then we'll have parking in this location here. So, there'll be two parking lots. This will be dedicated for City Mills, and the public parking spaces will be in this north area.
So, where you do the circle, that's where the public will be?
The public parking will be here, let me change colors. This will be the public parking area, which, and the Riverwalk is right here.
Okay.
So, the public parking will be, have able to access the Riverwalk.
And do we know approximately, because 19 spaces sound a little to me, but I don't know how many parking spaces?
Well, the 19 spaces are just reserved predominantly for city Riverwalk access. I mean, those are the guaranteed spaces that we're providing for the city, but there's going to be over 100 spaces for the entire site.
So, okay, so, help me, I'm sorry. So, 19 will be, like, dedicated, but people, if more than 19 cars come, there'll be plenty of parking spaces.
Yes, I mean, it's my understanding that, I mean, our spaces are not going to be, said, you know, for City Mill business only, that type of thing, it's not going to be designated. I mean, it'll just be an open parking lot, so if, you know, if there are 25 people that are there to use the Riverwalk, they'll be able to use those spaces.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure. Where the residents are going to park, is that?
They will have a gated designated parking lot. Just want to make sure I get the right spot, right here.
Okay, that's where the residents?
It's a little difficult to see, but this is an existing building footprint, as well as that, this is out over the river, the, kind of the powerhouse.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, anything else?
Well, Madam Mayor, if there are no other questions, much like the first project, I mean, you can see the photos of the buildings that we will not be constructing, and so there is economic development activity, and, and I've heard some pretty good numbers. And so, no doubt, there will be a benefit to that area and to the city of Columbus, and as we move forward towards redeveloping or developing city village, I mean, this is a great jumpstart. And so, you've heard Deputy City Manager mention the exchange and easement agreement, revenue to the city, $100,758, and, and of course, the city's commitment, $250,000 contributions toward a shared park, parking lot with 19 public parking spaces for access to the Riverwalk. And so, we believe this is a, a good partnership. It took us a long time to get to this agreement. I mean, we've been negotiating back and forth for more than a year or so with the new owner. And so, with all that said, we're requesting you to authorize the City Manager me to execute all necessary documents for the Riverwalk, City Mill Exchange and Easement Agreement between the city and City Mills Property, Properties LLC, in order to construct a Riverwalk at the City Mills. And we think that the fact that we are going to be able to go through or between those two buildings is a huge amenity because you can see where the Riverwalk currently goes around those properties. I mean, we could still go in and go around those properties, but this is economic development, it's an opportunity, it's a partnership, and we think it's good for the area and good for Columbus, and so, we're.
Okay, we've got a motion, is there a second? Any further discussion? All right, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Next, I've got a donation by Northern Little League. We're requesting to accept a donation of bleacher covers at a cost of $23,000.
Got a motion and second for approval of the donation by Northern Little League. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Got a donation by West Georgia Inspectors. It's $1,000 from West Georgia Inspectors Association to be used to assist the fire department's effort to fire prevention.
Got a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on this item? Okay, you may record your votes electronically. It passes.
Next, I've got a construction agreement for Fort Benning Road TE grant. It's a, it's the Fort Benning Road Streetscape project from Levy Road to the former main gate of Fort Benning, and it's a $500,000 grant with a 20,000, excuse me, a 20% match.
All right, we've got a motion and second for approval, any discussion? The item is queued for your electronic voting. It passes.
We've got a lease agreement with Sonova's Bank that allows a walk-up automatic teller machine at the Bay Avenue parking deck. Sonova's will rent the premises for $150 per month, and that rent will go to the city, of course, through Metro Transit System.
All right, that's a motion and second for approval. Seeing that there's no discussion, the item is queued for your voting. It passes.
I've got Architectural and Engineering Services. These are architectural firms and engineering firms that we have an agreement with so that when we have work to be done, we don't have to go out and go through a lengthy process. We've already got them approved by the city, and so, we've got several architectural firms and several engineering firms. 2WR Architects, ACOM Design Services, Barnes Gibson Partner Architects, Heck Burtishaw Architects, and SP Architects LLC as architectural firms. Engineering Services, Borch Wagner, Sumner and Cannon.
A motion to approve A through J, and I'll list them here. They're listed, and they're Architectural and Engineering Services, as is stated, that's items A, B, and C. State mandated solid waste disposal fees is item D. Repair of Caterpillar D7R Bulldozer. Item F is repair of fire truck. G is digital cameras and accessories for the police department. H is tub grinder, which is a National Joint Powers Alliance contract. I is storage for new network applications, and J is blade servers. Is there any discussion on any one of these items? Okay, seeing none, the, yes, excuse me? Okay, hold on just a second here. Okay, item C.
I wonder if maybe Mr. Jones would give us a little more. Is that one one of yours? I'm assuming, Mr. Jones, the Engineering Services for Infantry Road in the Follow Me?
Counselor Thomas, let me make sure I understand the question first. Could you repeat it for?
She said.
I just want you to tell me about this item.
Oh, for the engineering, what we're looking at, we are using now, we're using a different pot of money. We're using, actually using what is called Z230 because federal highway apparently likes to play with the alphabet. It used to be M230 money, now it's Z230 money, it hasn't really changed anything, and that's more than you really need to know about it. But in order to do that, it's an 80/20 money in terms of doing that, but we had to, that 20% match we put up is usually in terms of dealing with the engineering cost itself. And what we're looking at now is trying to extend the Follow Me Trail where it ends right now, just, just south of Torch Hill, and carry it on further south toward the Infantry Museum itself. And in terms of working with the Infantry Museum, we are trying to work a deal where we will actually construct a connecting roadway between Fort Benning Boulevard and South Lumpkin, because they have folks now that are traveling out of the South Lumpkin route of Fort Benning and try, and cutting through their parking lot to get back to Oakland Park. We've had this problem for, for several years, we've been trying to work out a solution with them, and we think this is going to be doable. And in doing that, we'll extend that trail down there and along that, along that roadway, which will allow us to connect eventually back to the Riverwalk itself. So, we'll make something of a loop from the Riverwalk on back up to the museum and on back up to Casita Road along the Follow Me Trail. So, it just extends our trail system more so, but also provides us some access and some ingress, egress also as well that the Infantry Museum's having to deal with. So, that's, that's the purpose of the engineering services for this, so we can go ahead and get that project underway.
And, and this is just for the engineering?
Just for the engineering this time, yes, ma'am.
Okay, anything further? All right, back to the motion, and the item is queued for voting. It passes.
Madam Mayor, we'll bring, record us court back on the work session agenda for discussion. We've already approved the Chief Clerk, and we've had all of the updates and presentations made, so that concludes my agenda.
All right, thank you. We'll turn it over to the clerk. Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, members of council, on the clerk's agenda have several items of information. First one being a memorandum from me advising of upcoming board vacancies on our employees' pension board, several temporary street closing applications for June 2nd, the Uptown Stilllife Grand Opening, also on June 2nd, the Uptown UCI Mountain Bike Eliminator World Cup, June 3rd, the Uptown Buzz and Burgers Cookoff, June 3rd, also a neighborhood gathering for Baxley Way, June 17th, the Mind of Christ Ministries Picnic, on July 29th, the Soapbox Derby Race, and then on August 1st, the National Night Out Against Crime Block Party. Biographical sketch of Ms. Fran Flacker, this is the Keep Columbus Beautiful's recommendation for Ms. Teresa Feig's seat on the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. Also a bio on Mr. Mark McCullum, their recommendation for District 8 to succeed Mr. Jason Cooper. Biographical, Ms. Tamika McKenzie to replace District 5, Mr. Robert Munford, and biographical sketch of Ms. Patricia Thomas, recommendation to succeed Ms. Melinda Stovall. We have received an honorary designation application from Ms. Jennifer Johnson. She is requesting that Sixth Street be named honorarily to the C. Medley Way in honor of Pastor Chester Medley Hayes of the Greater Beulah Baptist Church. If it's council's desire, it can be referred to the Board of Honor.
All right, that's a motion to refer the item to the Board of Honor, is there a second? All right, all those in favor, please state aye. Okay, let's see, we've got Counselor, hold on, Counselor Henderson?
Just for clarification, in passing the sign of the Board of Honor, it seems to me that when we're renaming streets, it's strictly an honorary deal, we don't change a street, they pay for the sign, it's typically the section of the street right in front of the church or the facility, it's not the entire street. That's correct?
Is that right? Yeah, okay, we're getting a nod?
Isn't that correct? It's just a street right in front of the facility, whether it's a church or radio station, whatever, and it's honorary, they buy the signs, and it doesn't change.
That is correct, that has been the process.
All right, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, but it's not the whole street? Okay.
Okay, all right, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, I think we're good on that one.
Item number 14, this is the unofficial appointment from New Horizon, they're asking that Ms. Andrea Winston be, to, I'm sorry, to reappoint Ms. Nancy Schrader.
Should we move approval, is that right, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Okay, so, we've got a motion and second for approval then. All those in favor, please state aye.
Have a resolution, at our last meeting, Mr. Matt Morphil was appointed. We need a resolution approving this appointment.
All right, a motion and second for approval of a resolution. All those in favor, please state aye.
Minutes of various boards, the Airport Commission, Board of Historic and Architecture Review, Board of Tax Assessors, Board of Water Commissioners, Columbus Golf Course Authority, the Council Health Insurance Task Force, Plane Advisory Commission, and Public Safety Advisory.
All right, we've got a motion and second for the acceptance of those minutes. All those in favor, please state aye. Okay, we've got a motion, was there a second? Okay, all those in favor, please state aye.
On a board appointment.
Oh, okay, let's see, we've got Counselor Huff. I don't think so.
On the board appointments, on a board of family and children's services, Ms. Chandra Huff has been nominated, she can be confirmed.
There's a motion and second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
On the Board of Water Commissioners, Mr. Reynolds Bickerstaff's seat will be expiring the end of December. He is eligible to serve again.
I'm sure he's the chair. I'm just assuming, but, I don't know, I guess maybe we should give him the courtesy of asking him, but, yes, Ms. Thomas. Counselor Thomas?
I did speak with Mr. Steve Davis about this, and he said he had not had an opportunity yet to talk with Mr. Bickerstaff. The term actually doesn't expire until the end of the year, so he's got a little time to, to do that, but he said he would get back with us and, and let us know if Mr. Bickerstaff was interested.
All right.
On our commission and visitor's Board of Commissioners, Mr. Brian Hayden is eligible, the mayor is renominating him, as well as Mr. Cameron Bean.
And there's a second? Well, we actually have a name for the third one, Tiny, that I've sent to both you and Lindsey.
I have that, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so let's just do the two, and then we'll move on. All those in favor of, of the two that are eligible to succeed themselves, please state aye. Okay, and then, Madam Clerk?
And then, Mr. Amish Dias for Mr. Charlie Desai's seat.
Can he confirm, second?
It's a motion and second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
On the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we have outlined these upcoming vacancies that will be expiring the end of June. Mr.?
Yes, let's see, we have Counselor Thomas.
I would like to renominate Dr. Billy Kendall, Carolyn Tigner, William Kent, Ray Walheim, Dr., I mean Reverend Willie Phillips in place of Jacqueline Bowling, and Mr. Herman Lewis, and Fran Flucker for Terry Feig, Lacy Harden for Nathan Rogers, and Orlean Baughman for Marcia Collins, and Sheila Mitchell for Jackie Barnes, this goes on, Patricia Thomas for Melinda Stovall.
Counselor Thomas.
Oh, there's another, there's several others down there.
For the District 7, that's actually Counselor Woodson's nominee, and she is recommending Mrs. Phillips because Reverend Phillips currently serves on a Public Safety Advisory Commission. Okay. I always say it wrong, but it's Therese.
So, I think she says Therese.
Right, for all those council district appointments, they can be confirmed. For all those council district appointments, they can be confirmed because they're a district appointment.
Move confirmation, second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
For, for those counselors who just made their nominations. On the New Horizons Community Service Board, Ms. Nancy Schroeder can be confirmed.
Move confirmation, second.
We've got a motion and second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
And then on our Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Gary O'Bruce has resigned. This is District 2's nominee, Counselor Davis. And also District 3, Ms. Vanessa Jackson's seat has been declared vacant.
District 3, I'd like to nominate Tasha Archibald.
Tasha Archibald. Okay, Ms. Archibald can be confirmed.
Move confirmation.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
And also for the District 7, Ms. Tracy Belts, that seat has also been declared vacant. Counselor Woodson?
Could you contact the young professionals to see if there's someone that might be interested? And Leadership Columbus, don't they have, Leadership Columbus, too?
We'll check, let them and see if they have any suggestions.
All right. Does that conclude your agenda, Madam Clerk?
It does.
Okay, yeah, I thought that's all had. Let's see, we've got, okay, we've got an executive session requested on an item of property acquisition or disposition. I'll entertain a motion. We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll clear the chambers, and it should only... We've just exited an executive session on property acquisition or disposition. No votes were taken, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We've got a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.